I'd like to call to order this special session of the Bloomington Common Council for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. Well, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Pete Motz Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Asari?
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Daley? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daley informed me earlier that she would be a little late tonight. Let me move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Tonight, we have just one item on the agenda, which is discussion of ordinance 2024-26 to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2025. And there will be public comment on this item after our discussion. The discussion and public comment on this piece of legislation is not intended to replace discussion during the second reading, which will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, December 11th, at our regular session, starting at 6:30 p.m. Rather, the meeting is to allow for additional discussion of this ordinance, which was introduced for first reading last week. Councilmember Stossberg?
Excuse me. I have a motion to structure our discussion. So I would move to structure as follows. First, have the ad hoc salary committee present a slideshow presentation regarding their process and ordinance 2024-26. And then after the committee presentation, that will be followed by a semi-formal period of questions and comments about the elected official salaries and possible alternative proposals. Speakers must be recognized by the chair, but members may direct questions to each other. And the practice of allowing all members a first-round opportunity before a second or subsequent round shall not apply. There will be no formal introduction of amendments, but the content of possible amendments may be discussed. And then a period of public comment will occur at the discretion of the president.
Second?
All right. We have a motion to structure our discussion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Questions? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That'll be the format for our discussion. So we'll start with a presentation by members of the ad hoc committee on salaries for elected officials for 2025.
Thank you. I actually am starting that presentation. So can staff? That should be in your email to...
I don't remember whether that's...
Yeah.
The Chair, Zulik, was going to introduce us at least. I could be mistaken. I know we're sharing the presentation.
The way that it was notated earlier, I was starting the presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully, I can make the clicker work right. So the ad hoc salary committee consisted of myself, Sidney Zulik as Chair, and then councilmembers Flaherty and Rosenbarger. And the essential purpose was following Indiana Code that the city legislative body shall by ordinance fix the annual compensation for all elected city officers. And this is generally not something that's been done over the last, I'm not quite sure however many years, the salary ordinance has tended to be presented by the administration with the other salary ordinances. And so this year, there was a deliberate kind of change to recognize this piece of Indiana Code that says the legislative body is actually the body that is supposed to do this. And so as a part of the broader overhaul to compensation at the city of Bloomington, we created this ad hoc salary committee. At our first meeting on October 18th, we established councilmember Zulik as the committee Chair. We talked about timelines and responsibilities and had a really kind of general conversation about how we thought maybe this should work and the concept of consultation with Crow, who had been consulted with regarding civil city salaries. And yeah. So as part of then my role, because I was the one that had time, I met with Crow, representatives from Crow, day before this. I think that this was shared with all of council at some point, that they had proposed some possible work that they could do. So when I met with them, we kind of had three categories of things that they could do. One was that they could validate the salary data that we had had. The clerk had compiled salary data from all of the second-class cities in Indiana. And so that data needed to be validated. We considered whether Crow could be engaged to validate that data, and then we could use that data. We also discussed at that meeting that I had with Crow, we also discussed the idea of them compiling and distributing a survey to other second-class cities because elected official responsibilities in different cities might vary, number of meetings might vary, committees and expectations and things like that. And so to really have an accurate picture in terms of comparing with other second-class cities, would we need to do something like that? And then the third option was to have Crow facilitate a conversation to create basically a values-based framework for what we felt like salaries should be and should be set on. Crow thought that that data that the clerk had compiled was very good. They did not feel like it was worthwhile to pay them as a firm to validate that data, but did recommend that that data be validated by somebody. So that was done internally by our council office intern. And then the survey was deemed sort of that it would take a while. So that was maybe not the best choice. And so we ended up as a committee deciding that having Crow facilitate conversation around this would be the direction that we wanted to go. We could have also asked them to do like all three of these things or any kind of combination. And so at the next like committee meeting we had, we made that choice as a committee. And so it's the four members. And then there were four additional meetings facilitated by Crow for a total of six public meetings. Crow came to them. Clerk Bolden was at all of them in her role as clerk and director paycheck from HR, did a lot of assisting in terms of dealing between Crow and the committee and figuring out a contract. And then, of course, our council intern did some work on this. And Legislative Assistant Taylor Brown was at all the meetings as well from the mayor's And I'm going to get my notes here. So the process that we did, then facilitated by Crow for those four meetings, we developed that set of guiding principles or values, of which there are five. We established then a basis for setting salaries based on those guiding principles. We identified relevant information and data that we should use. And then we determined kind of an annual process going forward that we needed to do every year in order to complete this process according to state code. And then once all of that was done, then we actually looked at numbers. So we didn't look at numbers until like the very end of this whole process. And now I think the slideshow goes to councilmember Zulik.
Thank you. So I'm going to go through our guiding principles, how we set them, and kind of why we chose these five to approach setting the salaries like this. So one through five starts off, and they're in kind of order of how we wanted to prioritize different principles. The first is accessibility of public service, equitable pay, quality community service, informed decisions, and a transparent and documented process. And so numbers four and five are kind of a little bit separate, just in the sense of those were the guiding principles that we used to, I guess, guide us. And then the top three are the values that we had in terms of approaching, setting the salary. So the first is accessibility of office. The way, and not just in Bloomington, the way that politics work in the United States is that you have to have some amount of money to be able to get involved. And the result of that is that there are a lot of people who would be brilliant representatives who just don't have the resources or the financial capability to hold office. So that was the first guiding principle. Currently, there are 11 elected official positions available in the city. Only one of them, which is me, is currently renting. I think that might be two. But Bloomington City Council is a part-time job, and so theoretically, this job should be able to be paired with another part-time job to, in order to keep it moving and be financially solvable, sustainable. So our second one is equitable pay. We wanted to make sure that, you know, across city council, clerk, and mayor, we were approaching their salaries with respect to all the different responsibilities people had to do, making sure that really that things were fair and that people have the resources that they need to be able to successfully do their job. We did consult the civil city salary grade to the extent that it was applicable to elected officials in regard to job complexity, direction of others and resources, environmental strain, which is difficulty of work, independent judgment and consequence of errors, and external work relationships. Okay, so guiding principle number three is quality community service. Because elected officials in Bloomington are expected to do a lot, there's a lot of detail that's involved in being a good representative. There are a lot of different nuances to, you know, being the representative that I think a lot of Bloomingtonians expect. And so we wanted to set the salaries at a point where someone could do this well and still have, well, someone could have the energy to do this well. And that's what we talked about a lot, where people who are worried about how to put food on their table or keep a roof over their head are not going to make the same, are not going to make the same quality decisions that someone who does not have those same concerns. And so we wanted, we wanted to be able to support people like that. And then just in terms of informed decisions and a transparent and documented process, which is a part of, you know, what we're doing today and walking everyone through it, and really just documenting everything that we're doing so that people understand how we came to this conclusion, even if, you know, I think most, if not all of us, are on board with some type of change. That was the goal of steps four and five for our guiding principles. And then I will kick it over to, back over to councilmember Stossberg.
Thank you. And so after we developed those guiding principles, we went ahead to go, okay, now how are we actually going to set salaries? And so the first piece of that was to brainstorm all of the ideas, whether we liked the ideas or thought that they were good ideas, we just kind of put them on the table to see how they worked out. And the Crow team facilitated the committee members anonymously through a heat map tool that I'll talk about in a minute. And then the highest scores from the heat map tool kind of rose to the top of our consideration because the high scores coincided with aligning with our guiding principles. So this is the brainstorm list that we came up with, that we could, you know, base salaries on hourly rates. We could set the mayor's salary and base everybody on the mayor, the clerk's salary, base everybody on the clerk, benchmark against other Indiana second-class cities, use area income factors. We could use a point factor rubric similar to civil city, and we could base it on what we were paid last year. And then we also consider that like last dot there where the print is a little smaller, the idea of market responsiveness, pay for education or certifications, longevity pay. And those were almost more like kind of add-ons to any of the other things that we considered. But we talked about that kind of, those ideas as well. So this is a sample of the heat map tool that we used. And this is just like a partial. It did have a few others, but I kind of cut those off to see the seven that were kind of the key elements. So what we had to do was we put in low, medium, high, one, twos, and threes. So the light blue is lowest and the darkest blue is highest. And so each of those potential bases were judged separately against our guiding principles. And so each of us did this anonymously, and we still, like, we didn't talk about whose was whose at the end or anything like that. And, I mean, I know that when I did it, when I went along, I didn't think about anything but the exact one box that I was looking at. So I was, I was thinking about how does setting the clerk's salary and then setting everything based on the clerk align with accessibility? How does that align with equitable pay, et cetera, et cetera? Considering each of those very independently. And I kind of assumed that my colleagues did kind of the same consideration in terms of looking at them all independently. And so that ended up with each of us having the score. So the green column is kind of the overall alignment to the guiding principles. And then Crow took all of that data and put them on one sheet for us. So each of those columns there is councilmembers one, two, and three, one, two, three, and four. And the scores in each of those boxes, the lowest score in each of those boxes could be a five, and the highest score in each of those boxes could be a 15. And then all of our scores were added up to get kind of a final score for each of those bases. So the final score, the highest that it could be is 60, the lowest it could be is 20. And so you can see highlighted there that what kind of rose to the top and the things that did not seem to align with our guiding principles. And now I think I'm throwing it over to councilmember Rosenbarger.
Okay, so these are a couple of slides about the highest scoring bases from the heat map and the lowest scoring, so the highs and the lows. And the two highest were, the first highest came in at 54 points out of 60, and that is setting the mayor's salary and base other salaries on the mayor. And then the second highest was 49 points out of 60, and that was set the clerk's salary and base other salaries on the clerk. And in our conversations around these, a sub-option that happened under the highest, under the setting the mayor's salary, was to do, set the mayor's salary and then base council on that, but look at setting the clerk's salary, not as a percentage of the mayor, but rather informed by the civil city pay grade for other positions with similar levels of responsibility. The lowest scoring bases, there were three. The first lowest was, it scored 25 out of 60, and that was what base, the base new salaries on what electeds were paid the previous year. So that is what we have been doing. It would just be the increase for the cost of living. And like I said, this has been the recent past practice. And then one problem that we acknowledged on this was anchoring bias, which I will talk about on the next slide. So also scoring low was benchmarking against other Indiana cities or county government or peer cities, like the peer cities that were used in the civil city salary grade analysis. I think councilmember Stossberg already talked a little bit about why benchmarking was problematic. But I want to say again, the committee noted that it fails to account for Bloomington's specific conditions. It wasn't rooted in any specific values or principles, and it may also reflect historical biases that undervalue certain roles or types of work. So the benchmarking scored 35 out of 60, and then also scoring 35 out of 60 was the hourly rate option. We are not allowed to get paid hourly under Indiana Code, but we were looking at sort of if it made sense to have kind of an hourly rate and then build a salary out of that. Okay, the next slide is just a little bit about benchmarking and anchoring bias. So anchoring bias is a cognitive bias that causes us to rely heavily on the first piece of information that we are given about a topic. So that, that occurs when, you know, you see something like, right now, city council is making $21,000 or $22,000. And then every change, you're looking at the new number compared to the, of how it compares to the first one. And with this, with our meetings and with this committee, like, what we said we set out to do was, you know, determine what elected officials should be paid, question mark. And we did not set out to decide, determine what elected officials should be paid based on what they are paid right now. So we were really looking at the guiding principles of accessibility and equity there. And then I think just like reiterating, the risk with anchor bias is that our decisions are skewed by that anchor point and not subjective, reflective of objective analysis and not based on a set of principles, but more so like anchoring to the status quo. Let me just, I just want to make sure I got all my notes on that. And then the recommended final basis of salary setting. So after many meetings on this, what we came away with was, for the mayor, we would set the salary at a level similar to compensation for civil city senior leadership positions. And the presumptive salary is the midpoint of the salary range for the highest civil city pay grade. We will get into more of these details in a couple sections in the bigger recommendation section. City clerk set that at a level similar to compensation for civil city senior leadership positions with the same mid, well, the salary at a midpoint of the salary grade for leaders of civil city departments. And then council, as a co-equal branch of government, yet given the part-time nature of the role, salary to be set as a percentage of the mayor's salary, percentage to be determined based on time needed to meet expectations. And I think now councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. So again, kind of roadmapping that this was a sequenced process that started with the question of what values, what outcomes are we trying to achieve? We were trying to have accessible public service, equitable pay, quality community service, and then also need objective and informed decision-making that is transparent and documented. You can think of those as both kind of values and process-oriented. The process-oriented one, in particular, making informed decisions, requires relevant information and data relevant to the basis for setting the salary to be available. So in the previous slide, when councilmember Rosenbarger was talking about a sort of presumptive midpoint, we decided for different salary ranges based on level of responsibility, for instance, that those were based on, that it's not the final inquiry, but it's a, it's a data point that does fit into the values framework from which you weigh it against whether things need to be adjusted based on the values. Sorry, that wasn't very clear. I'll try to be clear. So as far as relevant information and data, based on the bases we arrived at, crucial data points included the civil city pay ranges, especially for various types of departmental leaders or the highest-paid civil city pay ranges that fed into both the mayoral and clerk bases. City budget and constraints and capacity is an overall factor. And we noted here that the fiscal impact of what we're talking about is really quite minor. It is not meant to affect pay increases for other city staff. We have very healthy, in fact, excessive reserves, as communicated by the controller repeatedly throughout the budget cycle. Consultation with Bloomington elected officials was another important data point. We wanted input from the people whose salaries we were looking at. So both the mayor and the clerk were invited to give their, their comments on how their salaries should be set. And both gave written comments, which were included in the packet. Also, as was previously mentioned, both the clerk and representatives from the mayor's office, specifically the legislative specialist, did attend and participate in the meetings. And then finally, with respect to council members, we weren't inviting input from all nine council members at that time about how salaries should be set, because that's what the committee was delegated to take on. But we did have data points we needed from council members to be able to set an appropriate salary that was a percentage of the mayor's salary. And that had to do with what, what the job, the nature of the job for Bloomington City Council members. And so that one's a little bit complicated, more complicated because it's a part-time job. But the input from council members on that was an important piece of data. Next slide, please. So looking at additional contextual information, we did want to look at both the elected official salaries in Monroe County as well as others in Indiana second-class cities. The second-class cities piece was, was less relevant because it wasn't the basis for salary setting, although we did look at the, the nature of the roles in other places. And the clerk's office has done work on this in the past in terms of the level of, of activity across different cities, which varies quite a lot. With respect to the county role, we also looked at similarities and differences. Some similarities, or sorry, some of the differences in the council roles in particular involve fiscal versus fiscal and legislative body, meeting frequency, and also noted some similarities ultimately in where we landed with respect to how county council salaries anyway are set as a percentage relative to full-time positions at a senior elected level in the county. So those were some of the data points that helped inform a decision. We can move on to the next slide. I think I'm continuing here. So the fourth kind of piece to look at was just, just establishing this as an annual process with more lead time that can be repeated. As councilmember Stossberg mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, at the beginning of the presentation, this has been something that's kind of functioned in the more ad hoc, just adjust a COLA for the previous year kind of, kind of fashion, which really isn't embracing the council's statutory responsibility of actually setting salaries for elected officials, I would argue, you know, which needs to be done with intentionality and, and thoughtfulness. So this is meant to set up a process going forward. And so that timeline would, would follow this rough cadence is what's proposed. Around April, a newly formed ad hoc committee could be, you know, different members obviously next year, validates or updates the elected official compensation framework as necessary. The committee then gathers and analyzes any relevant information and data they need to recommend salaries for the, the following year. In August, the committee chair would draft an elected official salary ordinance, and that would be more so in the context of our normal budget cadence of August, September, October, discussing the salary ordinances along with the appropriation ordinances and passing them in October. So thank you. Moving on to the actual application of this framework. So the first four items we described, establishing principles and the basis for how we were going to make decisions, getting the appropriate data, and then implementing the process is kind of the last step. And so in doing so, next slide, please. This is just a summary of the recommendations from the committee. And again, these were based on the five, you know, all sort of truth to the five guiding principles. And so the proposal was that the mayor be moved to $151,410. That is an increase of $13,379. And it is, I'll get into the details of that, the rationale shortly. You can see also here for the clerk, $129,780, which is a more significant increase of $42,000 relative to the mayor, and councilmembers, $45,423, which is an increase of $24,270. So I'm going to take a slide on each of those at minimum to describe how a values-based framework led to those recommendations. And so the first was, you know, the, obviously, the committee discussed the, the bases and principles for setting mayoral salary. We also invited input from Mayor Thompson. Our views were really pretty well-aligned. Neither of us thought that the mayor has to be the absolutely highest-paid person in the city, but we did all agree that the job is high-stress, complex. In that point factor rubric framework, it's, it's, it scores high on all the things. It is a high, high responsibility, direction of a lot of resources and people, and should be near the highest-paid if not the highest-paid. We also discussed that with the new steps that have been implemented as part of pay grades, if you just were basing it on this needs to be the highest-paid position, that number could fluctuate quite a lot, simply based on the tenure and longevity of your current staff. And so that didn't seem right. And so we wanted to have it based on something more objective. And what we settled on was the midpoint of the grade 14, which for 2025 is $151,410. And, and I think that in 2025, that would actually align with and be equal to the salary of about three or four department heads who they are capping at step three. But that might not be true in years going forward necessarily, that the mayor would be the highest-paid. Second, the clerk's salary. Again, we received input from the clerk and have some highlights from that there. The committee did conclude that the clerk's position is, should be thought of as a department head, on par with other department heads in the city. Department heads used to be paid in a much tighter band than they are going to be going forward. forward. Now we have department heads at two different grades. It used to be they were only at one grade. We recognized, of course, that the role is full-time, as is the mayor's, and also has an on-call dimension. And so in setting the salary, we looked at grade 13, which was the lower of the two pay grades that department heads are set at, and discussed setting it at different points within the grade 13 with the possibility of supplemental pay for tenure or longevity, but ultimately decided to recommend the midpoint. And then moving on to the council salary. I think a few principles that animated the discussion were the differentiated but co-equal nature of the responsibilities of the council, the legislative and fiscal branch versus the mayor as the executive branch. Looking at some point factor rubric things here, for instance, there is a very high level of direction of resources, you know, $150 million annual budget, for instance, a lot of environmental strain, high consequence of errors, et cetera. And so based on those reasons, we also concluded the council absolutely should be paid similar to senior leadership. The question is how to do that, given the nature of the role is part-time. And so this is where, again, input from council members onto how they think about their roles and how all nine of us collectively think about the role of the council and what is necessary to provide the quality community service that is one of the values that we had defined. We conducted a survey of council member perspectives on that, which I'll cover here shortly. And these ranged from a low of 12 hours a week needed to provide quality service and a high of 26 hours a week needed to provide quality service. So that would range from 30% to close to 60% of a full-time job. We did talk about what is a full-time job? Should we be thinking of that as 40 hours a week? Should we be thinking that as something different? We certainly recognized that senior staff are sometimes asked to work more than their normal amount, but 40 hours a week, of course, is what a full-time job is. We talked about also the cultural problems of sort of workaholic or a sense of urgency that can exacerbate stress and toxic culture in city government. But we looked at not just the mayor as somebody who might work more than normal hours, but other department heads as a relevant factor who are also making that same level of $151,000 in 2025. So again, the average expectation from council members was about 42% of a normal full-time job or 17 hours. That was one factor among several in arriving at a recommendation of 30% of the mayor's salary, recognizing some of the different differentiated natures of the mayor versus the council role. And so I briefly want to cover the survey data and its structure before turning it back to council member Rosenberg. So the next slide, please. To try to get an accurate sense of what, again, what council members believe is needed to provide the level of quality and community service that Bloomington expects and that council members believe is necessary, we looked at four different broad categories. So time preparing for meetings, which involves, of course, researching, packet materials, emails and calls to staff, meetings with colleagues, meetings with staff, meeting with community. We looked at the hours spent in notice meetings. That's obviously meetings like this, our regular sessions, executive sessions, budget meetings, committee meetings. We serve on multiple boards and commissions and committees, all of us throughout the week. Constituent services and other types of community services, which we all do as well in various forms. And then legislative and policy development and reviewing and refining policy at the city, which isn't always legislation. Sometimes it's working actively with city staff to refine how something is executed or operated programmatically. And so, next slide, please. While there was, you know, reasonable variety in how council members conceptualize their own role, which I think is reasonable to expect, some might emphasize constituent services more than legislative development, for instance, or vice versa. It was interesting to reflect that, again, the lowest expectation of any council member was 12 hours a week, which is 30% of a full-time job. And the highest was 26 hours a week, closer to 60%. And so, again, that was, I think, an important data point in informing the recommendation of 30%, but not the, it was not a direct line from these numbers to the recommendation. So we were weighing all of the factors in the context of the guiding principles. And with that, I'll turn it back to council member Rosenberg.
Thank you. And so, next slide. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. And thank you. Okay. So as we talked about earlier, this is part of, you know, salary adjustment in the broader context of salary increases citywide. So just wanted to do a little comparing to what else is happening with civil city staff. And just kind of by way of reminder, over the last two years, the city did a massive salary study. So this started in January of '23 under the Hamilton administration and wrapped up, I guess, at the end of the summer under the Thompson administration. And the result is, for the most part, increases, salary grade increases for most positions in the city, definitely not all. And some pieces that I grabbed from the city's compensation philosophy are that the city aims to be an employer of choice, recruiting and retaining well-qualified employees. The city strives to provide a competitive total compensation package. And so there's a lot in the compensation philosophy about that package. So civil city staff also, they receive a base pay that strives to be, what they say is in the 40th to 60th percentile, and then the 60th to 7th percentile for harder-to-fill positions. And then there is base pay, certain forms of supplemental pay, health benefits, matching retirement contributions, vesting and perf, minimum of five weeks paid vacation plus holidays, 13 of those, flexible work schedules and ability to work remotely, and comp days for extra hours work paid out if not used by retirement or when you leave the city. Another part from the compensation philosophy is the city values reasonably higher salaries for leadership positions, particularly those with widespread impact on the community, personnel, operations, and resources. So just like by way of comparison, city council, the elected, the city clerk and the mayor have access to the full range of the compensation package provided other civil city staff. City council only has access to our base pay, health insurance, and then we do get to contribute. This is relatively new as of last term. We get to contribute to a retirement account, but we do not get offered the match that the other city staff receive. Part of these recommendations, of course, are rooted in correcting historic inequities slash making everything more equitable in every way across our elected official positions and then in a community and a city and a state. So the committee concluded that both council members and the city clerk have experienced inequitable pay in the past, which is counter to the guiding principles the committee developed, so that the inequable pay goes against the guiding principles and the framework. The committee recognized that to correct for inequable pay, a more significant adjustment is required for these positions. We also discussed phasing in change over time, given the magnitude of recommended increases, but we decided against that approach because it would unnecessarily delay implementing equitable pay. So it sort of brings to light that we're acknowledging that certain positions are not getting paid enough, yet we are going to delay for years the pay that you should be receiving and potentially should have been receiving for a period of time. Before I go to our last slide with substance, I wanted to pause to see if our CROW counterparts are on the call, and I want to weigh in or have any input about the process and the framework.
I can do that. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Well, good evening. My name is Shannon Madden. I'm a consultant from CROW. As was mentioned, CROW was asked to serve as a third-party facilitator for the work sessions of this ad hoc salary committee. I guess first I'd like to reiterate that our role was to facilitate those discussions to develop a structured process. We were not asked and did not provide recommendations or advising to drive any particular outcome. You know, really, I would just like to echo what was shared in the slides. I think the committee members who spoke did a really nice job of laying out the process, at least the, you know, the parts of the process that we were involved with. You know, I would reiterate that this committee really seemed to prioritize that values-driven framework, values-driven process based on those guiding principles. And that was long before there was any discussion of specific pay or numbers. There was, I think, as was shown in the heat map and some of the discussion around that, there was really a lot of thought and analysis and kind of critical thinking that went into this, lots of challenging each other and helping to define and refine a go-forward plan that those committee members could buy into. I think lastly, I would just say our last session with the committee was on November 18th. We did provide a summary memorandum of the process, which closed our involvement in that. That memorandum, I believe, is in the packet materials for this meeting here. And I don't believe I have any other comments at this time, but we appreciate your time, and I will turn it back over to the council.
Thank you very much. Okay. I will move to the last slide. Okay, so considering alternatives, we strongly encourage council members who would like to consider changes to the salary ordinance to engage in the compensation framework with the guiding principles that the committee created throughout our meetings. We think reverting to the past practice of simply replicating the previous year's salary would be highly out of step with the committee's overall recommendations. I would also add out of step with the city's salary grade changes and the compensation philosophy. And so we just have some examples here. Do you agree with the guiding principles? Do you think that those make sense and should be? Do you have any changes, additions, removals? And should they be defined differently? If you think that they make sense and you affirm that is how we should use them, we do hope that we can use them as we talk about other options. Do you agree with the basis of salary setting? Do you think it should be something different? And if so, what? Does your application of the guiding principles and basis of salary setting lead you to a different conclusion? If so, what result and how did you arrive there? What was the conclusion assessed according to the guiding principles? So as Shannon stated, and I think members of the committee throughout the slide process, we did, I would say, ground all of our work in these guiding principles once they were created and thoughtfully created. So the next slide is just sort of an example that we mocked up of sort of what we did with all of the original basis for salary setting ideas. And I think that we will have different proposals on the table here. And again, just encourage fellow council members to use this to see how well their proposal or their colleagues' proposals align with these guiding principles. And that is the end of the presentation. I'll stop.
Thank you to all the members of the committee for your hard work and for the presentation. Just to remind you about the motion that was adopted earlier, we will now have a semi-formal period of questions and comments about elected official salaries and possible alternative proposals. Speakers must be recognized by the chair, but members may direct questions to each other and the practice of allowing all members a first round opportunity before a second or subsequent round shall not apply, although please be aware of, you know, voices we may not have heard yet. There will be no formal introduction of amendments tonight, but the content of possible amendments may be discussed. So, and of course, please, you know, be, let's try to be concise and be aware as the time passes this evening, and be aware that we want to give the public a chance to comment as well. So who would like to start? We had some questions that the committee report ended with. Maybe thinking about the guiding principles first would be a good way to start. Are there people not on the committee who would like to give their views of those principles or anything else we heard to start us off? Council member Alom?
Well, thanks first to the committee for doing the work on this. I appreciate it. Let me just say, let me begin by saying that I'm sure that we're all cognizant that the recommendations is presented, represented a type of sticker shock for many people. And, but I see that you're following a certain framework and you attempted to determine salary based upon that. And it seems to me that, could I say first of all, that when I became aware of it, it was just, it was already in the packet. I realized that the committee had a very truncated amount of time because you were trying to get it done this year. But I didn't, I wasn't aware of it until it appeared in the packet. And my first thought was, that's a lot. We're asking for a lot. So as I understand your presentation, what was proposed would put the council as first in the state in terms of its pay per council member substantially higher than even Gary, which is sort of anomalous. It is, it would be 30% more than Gary. The clerk would be first in the state in terms of pay. The mayor would be third. So when you said at the beginning, whomever, several of you referenced it, that you were following this framework, but did you refer to the salaries in the state that were presented by CROW as a reference point and the duties of council members of at least some of those cities or the clerk in terms of landing on those numbers? In other words, was that part of your consideration? Did you just conclude that those were, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, you know, that people are very poorly paid or something in terms of council or clerk in the state or what? You know, or did you just choose to stick with the framework regardless of that information? I'm kind of curious as to, you know, the word was used anchor, that there was sort of anchor bias. But this seems maybe, you know, like you disregarded the anchor. Is that correct?
Who would like to respond to that? Council member Stasburg?
I'll respond to that, but I would also like to invite other committee members to respond to it because I think that all of us kind of reacted to it differently. I did not like that final number when it came up. Like, and I didn't like the clerk final number, and I didn't like council final number. And honestly, I wasn't real keen on the mayor final number either because they did all just seem really, really high to me. And we spent a significant amount of time, I felt like, kind of going around and going like, well, what are ways that we could change this and still like be true to this process that we just went through? And in the end, I personally reluctantly kind of voted to forward it through because I didn't think that it was, I mean, that was a pretty lengthy last meeting, and I didn't think that we were going to get anywhere further by continuing to try to talk about it amongst the four of us. I think that the process that we followed was really kind of true to an ideal. And in real life, maybe ideals don't work out very well, but I didn't think in that moment that in that place in the committee, it was the place to kind of figure out how the compromise was. So yeah, I mean, that did occur to me. It did like go like, how should we change this? How should we reflect on that? I do think that historically, especially clerks and councils in the state of Indiana are extremely underpaid. It's really interesting seeing some of this community backlash that's like, how dare council as the legislative body increase their own salary when literally by state code, we're the only ones that are allowed to increase our own salary? And no wonder, no wonder councils around the state. I moved here from Richmond, Indiana, and the council salary in Richmond, Indiana is $7,000 a year, $7,000. And the survey that we didn't do with CROW, you know, in terms of like asking other second-class cities like what their responsibilities are, would have yielded some really interesting results. We didn't feel like we had time to pursue that kind of deep dive into really comparing the different roles at, you know, during the time that we had. So, I mean, it really does put legislative bodies in a really uncomfortable position to talk about their own salaries and to talk about increasing them. And it does make it seem like selfish and self-centered. But as somebody who's been in a completely under-recognized position for the last 17 years of my life, like, I think that at some point, people have to say like, hey, the work that we do is valuable. And I'm not necessarily like defending that 45 number right now because it's a really uncomfortable number. uncomfortable number. Um, but the service that we provide Bloomington is really valuable. And I think that that needs to be somehow recognized.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, thank you. I'll add a bit. Um, and let me be clear about if, if we had established a basis of benchmarking as the main tool we wanted to use, I think we would have gone much deeper on exactly what the duties are of other councils, for instance. Interestingly enough, actually, a lot of that work has been done as this council has considered, um, you know, meeting structures in the past. And, and our clerk has done a pretty deep dive on the, the meeting frequency of other folks around the state. I feel fairly high confidence in saying that we, that we are more active than any other council in the state. And also that the expectations in terms of the level of community involvement, collaboration that goes into product, producing, uh, policy and legislation is very high here relative to, to many other places, just based on conversations I've had at AIM conferences, for instance, with other council members, uh, from around the state. Uh, so there are some significant differences there that I think, uh, warrant a different approach. And I, and I would just echo that I think specifically with clerk salaries, uh, clerks' roles are historically and commonly held by women. It is a type of work that is systematically undervalued, uh, in the private and public sector. And so, you know, I think, and then the council side, again, there's like, I don't know about Indiana specifically, but there is, uh, academic research out there about this sort of maybe counterintuitive phenomenon that legislatures tend to be, uh, poorly compensated for the very fact that Councilmember Stossberg was describing, which is that they have to set their own salaries and there's essentially never an incentive to increase because you can only be maligned for it. You can't, nobody will ever praise you for trying to have fair pay relative to the, you know, your peers in city government, for instance. Um, and so that too leads to a sort of systemic depression of council salaries. Uh, the $7,000 of ample enrichment surely has that phenomenon going on. It's absurd. Um, the, the same is probably not true for mayor oral salary where it's very, uh, probably intuitive to most folks to say that's the leader, they deserve to make the most. So they just make more than every other position. Um, you mentioned that our mayor's proposal would be third in this, in this, the state as well, so also near the top. Maybe it should be higher. I'm open to that conversation too, you know? Um, so none of that's to say that the specific recommended numbers are, are correct per se. It's just that, uh, in thinking seriously about benchmarking and it's both its benefits and its limitations, uh, we, we've just concluded that, yeah, that really wasn't a suitable mechanism. And if we tried to kind of get ourselves there on the backend like Councilmember Stossberg was, was describing, you start changing, uh, the values. You say, okay, maybe we should only value the council at 20% or 15% of, of the mayor. And it's really hard to defend that when we're, have people doing 15, 20 plus hours a week of work in the senior elected positions in the city, you know? And so, I absolutely understand where you're coming from. I think both the, the anchor of, of past salaries and benchmarking, um, are really hard for people to mentally sort of wrap, wrap their heads around relative to, uh, the approach we took, which was really trying to center in the, the realities of Bloomington, the high cost of living here and the natures of, of the roles and the values we hold as a city and as elected officials.
Any other responses from committee members? Other comments or questions from council members? I guess I will ask something that I've asked like almost all the committee members individually. Um, so, but here we are in a public meeting. So I, I keep trying to understand the difference between principle number two, number one, accessibility of a public service and principle number three, quality community service. Um, it's because they both seem to indicate that, uh, you know, you need a certain amount of money so that it isn't just rich people who can do this job. I mean, that's the shorthand. Um, because you want quality service and it has to be accessible, meaning it has to pay enough so that people don't have to work another, you know, high-stress full-time job to do it. Um, can somebody, does somebody figure out a good way of explaining that? A little more detail. Councilmember Zulik?
Short response to that. I think, um, for me, the first one in terms of accessibility was referring to like, can anyone hold this job? And the third one in terms of quality of community service is like, are we attracting good people to hold this job? I'm interested to see what my colleagues say, but that's how I felt about it.
Thank you. Other committee members want to speak to that? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Sure, I'll do, you know, I, I know I did talk to you about it a little bit and I'll do a second stab at it. Um, what I was saying on the phone, I think, was I also consider like accessibility. Okay, I think you could be struggling too because both of them could have like overlapping outcomes. Like, as you're saying, you're saying like both tend to lead to higher pay, which like could be true with accessibility and also equity, right? Like, um, how we sort of say, when we do things that both increase equity and like climate action in our city, they, they seem to be the same actions. So I think it's similar to that. Um, so I also could see, I can see like the accessibility one, as, as Councilmember Zulik was saying, um, it's like, it's like the external view of this, that anyone in our community can run for this office. So it's, it's giving that right access to anyone who is a resident and 18 years old. And then I sort of see, um, quality custom community service as internal. So it's like, okay, right, like again, as she was saying, like, once you have the job, like, how much time does it take you to do it in a quality way that, you know, um, you could get hired again, right? Like that you're responding to emails and you are meeting with constituents and you are working with staff and you are working with your colleagues, which like I think we can all say on this one, has been a lot of time for all of us. Um, and right, like working with other department heads and writing legislation. And so that to me is more, um, internally, how much, how much time is it taking to do the job? And then the other is like, right, accessibility is like, how do we get more people to run for this office so that we have robust and competitive primaries, which I have heard already that some people are thinking of primaring or, which is great. I'll stop.
Thank you. That, that is helpful. Councilmember Stossberg?
I guess the other thing I'll add is that idea of quality community service is kind of like a more overall goal, I would say, for all elected positions. Like we want our elected, um, uh, people to be giving Bloomington, like as a resident, I would like my elected officials to be giving me good quality community service, right? And so as an elected, I'm kind of like, I would really like to give my community quality service. And you can give quality service and get paid nothing. You can give, uh, really crummy service and get paid a lot. And so it was this idea like, okay, uh, I, I kind of, um, I equated it to like internal or intrinsic motivation versus extrinsic motivation. So you, you can be motivated really internally to just do well no matter what, regardless of pay, or you can be motivated externally by anything else, including things like pay. And so if you're going to be motivating somebody to do quality community service, it helps if they're paid well, right? At least there's some sort of like, like equity and meaning in that pay, so it doesn't feel like you're just constantly giving away your hours and not receiving any benefit from it. Because even for somebody who's really intrinsically motivated, like that gets like old after a while. Um, so that's kind of how I felt about quality community service and how it was different from accessibility. For me, accessibility was more like, is there enough, um, salary to be able to like pay bills? Like to, to pay for your housing, to pay for your food, to, you know, to like get those things together enough. And so like in the full-time positions of mayor and clerk, that's a little easier to be like, is the salary like enough to live on in Bloomington? For the part-time position, it's a little bit fuzzier. Um, but yeah, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
I mean, I'm satisfied, but if you want to add something, go ahead.
We talked also about, a lot of people come up to me and say, I would never do that job, it's not worth it. And like, that is in direct relation to the pay that happens based on how much time is expected of this position especially, I would say. That they're saying, right, like, it is not worth it to me. Like, you could not pay me what you're paying to do this and instead I'm choosing to get paid elsewhere. And so that, um, quality, I would say of customer ser, community service and accessibility, both like tie into that to be like, how do we entice qualified candidates to run for this office? Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Daly?
So I, I think maybe my, my overarching question would be, um, well, why now? Right? I mean, when we all accepted these positions and ran for these positions and put our name in the ring for these positions, we knew what the salary was. Um, so I understand that we just did the Crowe study and looked at, uh, city employees. So is it, is it tied to that? And that's, I mean, that's a fair answer if, if that's what it is, but, um, you know, the, the number one feedback that I'm seeing is that we knew what the salary was that we were accepting. And so this is not something that we should be doing right now, it should be something for the next sitting council. So can I ask what, what was the impetus then to, to do this now and not say, hey, we're going to put these numbers forward, but for the next council, not for ourselves?
Which council member would like to reply from, that respond?
Well, I could start or others.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I think, um, sorry, there were a few things running through my head as you were asking the question. I think, um, uh, first of all, it's, uh, the council has been like, we described this phenomenon that councils sort of never act on this. Uh, and so it's kind of kicked, kicked the can down the road perpetually. Uh, we didn't, for instance, last year say, hey, we're not getting paid equitably, maybe we should fix it for the next council. And as it turns out, four of us on this body would have been voting on that, you know? And unless literally all nine seats are turning over, uh, at least in Bloomington, where often the primary election is determining who sits next, you're going to have people voting on their own salary, so to speak. I think the other thing I would say is that everyone who gets hired by the city of Bloomington knows what the salary is for the job they're accepting. That's not unique to city council. Yet we have department heads getting $30,000 to $40,000 raises next year. We have coordinator roles getting $30,000 raises next year because pay is not competitive in the city of Bloomington across the board, uh, because we let it get that way over time, unfortunately. And so this is absolutely part of the overall systemic correction for inadequate pay, uncompetitive pay, inequitable pay in the city of Bloomington. Uh, so it'd be wild to me if we're talking about senior leadership positions getting $30,000 and $40,000 raises, but the council should stay identical to what it was because that's what it was the very first time you decided to run for office. Um, but again, that's the same for anybody accepting a job. So I think those things are related in my, in my mind. It's just been also sort of, I guess, proven difficult to get folks to, I understand the rationale that you're saying, make the decision for the next group of folks, but that hasn't happened historically either. And I don't think that, um, excuses us from our responsibility to set pay in a way that we actually thinks meets, meets values. I, I guess I would feel derelict of my duty to not set equitable pay, uh, because it's our responsibility statutorily to do so.
Councilmembers Zulik?
Well, I'll start off by saying like, we've heard the public feedback and we are going to decrease it in some capacity. But my initial approach was, you know, I sat through some of the budget meetings from last year and the kind of reverse argument was used a lot and just in terms of like, well, we have a lot of turnover this year, we should just wait until next year to let the next council decide. And so it's like, I'm seeing both of those arguments and that's okay. Like, it might be the same people who are using those arguments, it might be different. But that was, I think, my rationale.
Councilmember Stossberg?
If not now, when? Like literally, uh, Councilmember Flaherty talked about kicking the can down the road. At some point, somebody has to have some backbone and say, like, we have to stand here and, and do something, even if it's uncomfortable. So are we going to kick the can down the road, which is a viable option? Or are we actually going to stand up and have backbone?
Other, um, comments or questions? Councilmember Allo?
Comments, is that all right? Uh, okay, I don't know where to begin. I, I guess I'll pick up where, um, Councilmember Stossberg left off. And I, I, you know, I agree, there's an argument for taking action now, being objective. Unfortunately, you know, there's, there's a lot that comes with this office and that is, um, it is a position of public service. I guess the assumption is you're not in it for the money, you're in it for public good. However, I'm very sensitive to the idea, and this came up previous councils. One pub, one council member who's very well off in the 90s said, I don't need to be paid, we shouldn't be paid. And then another council member whose sole income was the council salary said, then I can't serve. Then what about a lot of low-income people that can't serve? It's not just for people who have discretionary money or time. So, so that's, there's something to say there, but I think that there is an interpretation that taking action, at least major action, that would be, uh, increasing our salaries to a large extent, um, would be interpreted, it, it breeds cynicism, would be interpreted as self-serving. And we all are in the same political party as well. So it also, that, that impacts, I think, the interpretation as well. So I tend to be very reserved in terms of, yes, I think if we, uh, well, well, here, here's a, a ref, reference. I think the B-square Bulletin did a, did a good job at summarizing, um, this debate. Um, the article that Dave Askins put out with the charts, and I don't have them available, maybe I can display them tomorrow, of the elected's salary over time is informative. Because you'll see that there are little times of incremental upticks where we're trying to keep pace because there's a recognition that we're not because of cost of living increases and so forth. And then there are, in, in the mayor's salary, there's a noticeable in the last five years change in slope, um, such that the mayor suddenly is making, I believe, over 30, or over five years, a 30% increase. Um, over that same period of time, the previous mayor added to his staff. So he had more staff and more, more pay. Um, we recognize that, that the clerk was underpaid, uh, last, in our last session and last year. And, uh, it sort of fell on the council to kind of try to interpret how to proceed on that. And I know there's a debate about what the clerk consists of in terms of duties and responsibilities, um, and whether they're comparable, comparable in the state because some clerks do different work. Uh, some act as treasurers, some have controller responsibilities, some adjudicate or, um, are responsible for the municipal court, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's complicated. Uh, and then the debate is whether the clerk represents a department head or not. Okay. Um, we took action, increased this clerk's salary by 34% to try to make up for lack of equitable pay, uh, in that trajectory. What you'll see in the graph though, is that the, the council really remained fairly flat. Our slope did not increase and it was recognized last year that, I recognized that, I said, I think we're underpaid relative to peer cities, relative, relative to cities with similar amounts of work and similar size cities and so forth. But I estimated it would be, just in those comparisons, not in an objective way with a framework in mind, but just looking at other cities, that we were probably over, underpaid a few thousand dollars, maybe 5,000, I don't know, something, something on that order. Um, and I think that this was reflective of the last administration not, um, responding to inflationary pressures that we saw were affecting all employees. And now this current administration is responding to that disparity and making up for it. We've made it up in public safety, uh, certainly, which I'm very happy and hopeful about, but ASME still has yet to basically negotiate and, um, we're all under those inflationary pressures. Um, so- we're all under those inflationary pressures. So I would say, at this point, I would see any major increases based upon, and I'm, and I'm not in a position to interpret what the committee did in the next day or so, because we're going to be voting on something tomorrow. But I feel that a very modest increase would be completely defensible and rational and could be easily explained to the public and our constituents and, and so forth. A large increase is just something that I agree with my, my colleague, Councilmember Daly, that we should, if we're going to do that, we should do it in the last year of office so that the beneficiary would be the next council or the next clerk. And then we could run on that. That would be, we would be defending that increase and say, it was needed because of this. It's not an easy place to be, but I think that that would be the responsible thing. Otherwise, it just, I think it's, it looks too, it, it feels too self-serving to go so high. So, so that's my position, a modest increase. I think the mayor is in a good place in terms of her compensation right now. I think the clerk is in a good place, maybe with some latitude for change upward a bit. And the council, I think, is in actually need for some modest, very modest incremental change. So, thank you for listening. I didn't realize it'd be that long of a.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Can I ask Councilmember Rallo real fast, like, can you define modest a little bit more?
Okay, so, yeah. So I see that we're, we're making 21.5 right now. And if I look at, say, Fishers, Indiana or Carmel, they're making mid twenties. They're making 24, 25,000, 26,000, I think, in case of Fishers. They're comparable in terms of size. They're 100,000 or so. Councilmember Volin has said many times that we've been undercounted because of the COVID and students missing at the time. So we're probably in the range of 90, 90 to 100,000. So the population seems right. I look at their duties. It seems like we do do more. The cost of living here is more. Where, I think we're about 9% over the state average. We're, we're one of the high, most expensive cities to live in, in Indiana. So that has to come maybe into some consideration. I don't mean to be lengthy in this, but this is, you know, I've been thinking about, you know, where to kind of ballpark this. And I'm looking at them as sort of aspirational, that we should probably, it would be comfortable to be in that range, plus or minus 1,000 or so, close to Fishers, which is about 26. So something, something in that range, plus or minus 1,000 or 2,000 or something like that, would be, I think, entirely reasonable. But I have to mull this over. And I'm happy we're having this discussion because I'm, I'm listening to you all. And I don't have it yet all figured out. But that's where, that's where I'm landing. I hope that helps. Yeah.
You're looking at comparisons with other, other cities as well as the cost of living in Bloomington. Are those your two criteria that you're mainly looking at?
Yeah, comparisons. And then whether it costs more to live here, I think are, are two things that would be entirely reasonable in terms of consideration. Yeah. Now, there are duties, you know, in terms of the clerk's salary, there are duties that, so Carmel, for instance, makes on the order of, I think, 129 for the clerk, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not looking at that right now. But that, that clerk happens to be the clerk of the municipal court as well. So there are added duties there. I should also mention that we did add, and I think I did mention this, that both the clerk and the, the mayor benefited from more employees over time, too, in the last few years. The council has really not. I think we've gone up maybe half an FTE. Is that correct? In just the past few years. So, and we're, we're nine people that rely on really a skeleton crew, very good crew of council attorneys. But we haven't expanded our staff noticeably. Thank you.
I, I think, just as a committee member, I want to weigh in on that. Is that prudent? Okay. I just took a couple notes, public service. Some people have the thought that public service is for the greater good. I would say that is a principle and value that some people can and do recognize. But it is not one that we recognized in, as a guiding principle in the framework. The, the idea, the value that, or the principle that because you're doing community work, you should get paid less than a market rate is both elitist and exclusionary. So it, it really goes against our guiding principle, one, of accessibility, and three, of equity. Oh, two, equity. Yes, sorry about that. People don't ask employees of IU or Cook or city staff, sometimes city staff, you know, about why they make so much, right? And if they should be donating part of their salary for the greater good instead of making a fair market wage. I, I do just want to, again, encourage fellow council members to use the framework if you find it useful. We did spend a lot of time on that, looking at, as Councilmember Rallo said, our current pay. It, it scored the lowest when we ranked it in the guiding principles. It scored 25 out of 60. And then benchmarking scored the second lowest. It scored 35 out of 60. So for me, that is a major departure from the guiding principles, to use the two lowest ranking basis for salary in order to set elected official salaries. Thanks.
Clerk Bolden had a comment. Is that right?
I did, actually. Thank you for giving me this time to make a, just a couple of quick comments. But before I do so, I would like to note the passing of County Councilmember Cheryl Monson and express my deepest sympathy to her family and friends and colleagues. It is a huge loss for our community. And I don't want to go without noting that. Just a couple of minor corrections that I thought would be helpful while you're having this discussion. Councilmember Rallo noted that if the mayor were paid at the suggested rate, it would make her in the top three. The mayors of Carmel, Fort Wayne, Lafayette, hang on, just a moment, because I shifted my ordering. Carmel, Hammond, Fishers, Fort Wayne, Noblesville, and Gary, and Lafayette, all make over $140,000. So even if you bring the mayor up to the 141, roughly, she would still be running somewhere between the eighth or ninth highest-paid mayor in the state of Indiana. Similarly, for clerk salaries, you're absolutely correct. Depending on where you settle the clerk's salary, it would bring the Bloomington city clerk up very high in terms of the sheer salaries. I think you may have forgotten that the clerk's office does also do some adjudication through the office. However, so, and no city clerk in the state of Bloomington has controller duties because second-class city clerks aren't controllers. That's why we have controllers. And treasurer duties, those fall to clerk treasurers. So most of the comparisons when we were talking about clerks are for clerks, not for clerk treasurers or controllers. And then last, I did want to address the notion that the clerk's office has added staff and has more staff than we did before. We actually just got back up to the same staffing levels that my predecessor had when they left office. We actually decreased our staff. And at the same time, our workload increased. Council meetings almost doubled over the last several years. The time spent in meetings has increased. And we also increased the staffing in the council and clerk's office. So while you're correct, we're now back at the place we were nine years ago. We haven't actually increased our staff. We've just recovered to where we were with even more work than we had before. And last, you're correct, you did just approve a new staff member this year for the clerk's office. But that was upon request of the council to add even more work to the clerk's office. So saying, oh, but they have more staff than they ever had before, is a shallow reading of the staffing and work duties of the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members with other points about the salary rationale and proposals?
Can I just say, clarification?
Was the proposal for 151 for the mayor, not 140?
That's it.
All right.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilmember Rallo for, yeah, sharing your thoughts, you know, where you're at on this. I appreciate that. Obviously, there's a limit to only four of us as a committee, you know, working on a framework. It sounds like when it comes to basis, that benchmarking weighs pretty high for you, which of course is not something we settled on. And it might be that there's different values underpinning that. You know, equitable pay, for instance, like, we defined as elected officials are compensated equitably according to their respective levels of responsibility and relative to other Bloomington elected officials and departmental leadership. So rather than saying, and you might think of that differently. You might think of equity as similarly sized cities elsewhere, right? Paid similarly relative to them. And so I think just naming those things and trying to get clearer about how each council member is thinking about it. I'm also hearing some, I guess, discomfort with, with raises that are, with changes that are significant. And maybe in, in thinking about how we, as a council, try to get at something that is, I don't know, common ground or middle ground, balancing all these things, I think I, I found the idea of phasing things in over time attractive. I, I think on the one end, you, you could change it to what you think is, is necessary this year. On the other end, you could change it in 2027 to take, put in effect, you know, the next year. And maybe, maybe, maybe a middle ground or a balance there is a, a phase in over a three-ish year period of time, for instance, like the remainder of this term. I think, just, yeah, just with respect to benchmarking, I, I think we need to be very careful to, like, weigh too much on that one factor. I, I have to look back at Fishers details. I don't think, like, like, I think the, the level they work is very, very different than what we do. And then, so, you know, that needs to kind of factor into equity, too, if we're thinking about benchmarking as, as a relevant input. And, and then again, that, you know, we've made an intentional choice on the compensation framework as a city of Bloomington that I think we should consider elected officials to really be a part of. You know, that, that when we're seeing department heads go from 117,000 to 151,000, for instance, and things like that, 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 that matters. Like, we should be thinking about that relative to our role and relative to the clerk's role and the mayor and everybody else. So, I don't know. Just reflecting, I, I do appreciate, again, like, bringing in different perspectives and values on it. And maybe it helps us, the more we're able to share about kind of where we are, what we're thinking of getting to, to a workable, something that, you know, obviously majority, and hopefully a strong majority, if not everybody, can support.
Other thoughts or questions? Councilmember Stossberg?
Is this an appropriate time for us generally? Does, I mean, I know that there's some theoretical amendments floating out there. And I'm just kind of wondering if anybody wants to share any of the thought process behind anything that anybody's been thinking about. I appreciate that Councilmember Rallo kind of shared what could, in theory, be a potential amendment with regard to those three salaries. I know that I do have some thoughts on this myself. But before I go, I want to open it up to anybody else who might want to share any specific proposals that they're considering and would like feedback on from the rest of us.
Right. We have no finalized amendments. That, we've not seen those in any finalized form, but there have been some, I think, in the works. So would anybody like to share what they've been working on or proposals for amending the ordinance as it's currently written? Councilmember Daly?
Give me a sec to pull up the numbers. Sorry. So Councilmember Zulik and I, we were talking about keeping the framework of this. My, my initial reaction when I saw the salary ordinance was, you know, a sticker shock price. And so Councilmember Zulik and I had a conversation about, well, what, what could we do to make this a little more palatable and kind of a compromise with the two different camps of, yeah, that's an awful lot of money all at once, and balancing it with the stagnant cost that, or salary that council has seen over the many years and the feeling that everybody else is seeing much more reasonable adjustments to their salary and the feeling that we do want to make this an equitable position for anybody in our community to feel that they are able to step up and do this. So keeping the framework that the ad hoc committee had in place, we played with the numbers a little bit and thought, well, putting the mayor in at 40 hours a week is, is probably low. It's, it's probably quite low. We estimated it that maybe it's closer to 60 hours a week. And so when we plugged those numbers in, that brought us down to a new framework, keeping the mayor's salary the same as what was initially proposed and the, which was 151. And then that brought council down to a total of 30,282. Another sticking point, as I mentioned, as you noticed in my question, when I talked about, well, why now? You know, I like the idea of the phasing in, at least, rather than doing it all at once. So we talked about starting it now and then doing incremental changes each year to finally, in 2027, vote for the 2028 year, when the next council is seated, whether it's us or other representatives, finally reaping that final amount of 30,282. So it would be an increase just for 2025, up to 24,196. And then the following year, we would have to vote again for maybe 1.5,000. And then the following year, 1.5,000. And then in the third and final passage of voting would be a final 3,000. But those numbers would be flexible each year on how we wanted to divide it up. That would be something that the council could discuss. And I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Zulik, because I think she's pointing out I'm forgetting to say something.
I don't want to let you present the whole thing. So we, we also did a similar approach for the mayor and city clerk in terms of a phase in salary. While we left both of those final numbers the same, we did a similar approach in, in line with guiding principle number three, or guiding principle number two, equity of approaches. And we, I guess, allocated the first third of the final raise for 2028 for this year, which would put the mayor at 142,490.67. And the city clerk at 101,260. And I think both Councilmember Daly and I were trying to find, you know, a nice balance between the two different arguments that we've heard over the past few years, which is, one, the outgoing council should leave the salary setting to the incoming council. And two, the current council should always wait for the last year to set the salary. And so by doing kind of a phased-in process to eventually come to the salaries that we're shooting for, we're hoping that we can hit kind of a middle point.
Yeah. So can I just follow up with a question? So it sounds like if you're estimating the mayor's amount of hours per week at 60, and are you, so you're keeping the estimate of council hours at 12? So we would, the council member's salary would be 20% of the mayor's salary. Is that right? So in the first year, the council salary would be 28,500 or 28,498. Is that right?
The council salary would be 24,196. We're not doing the 20% each year. We're doing the 20% off the final totals.
Oh. And then doing 30% And then doing 30% of, 33% of that each year? I'm trying to follow your math here.
I could answer that. So we wanted to do the first third now and then give ourselves three years for the flexibility, whether that's, you know, 1.5,000 next year and 1.5,000 the year after and the final 3,000, or if we split it up in thirds of the final two-thirds, or we just wanted to offer some flexibility. And Councilmember Daley, did you?
Yeah, I just, further going into that, I know the math sounds a little bit wonky, but the thought was doing the third now, so that feels like a good compromise, that we're getting that $3,000 pay bump, but then waiting for that final full third to take effect for that 2028 legislative session. So again, we're trying to make it feel fair across the board.
So your proposal for 2025 salaries has the council member salaries at less than 20% of the mayor's salary? Because 20% of 142,490 would be 28,000 something.
So the 20% is the final number that we'll hit in 2028?
I guess that really bothers me, that we would be making less than 20% of what the mayor makes next year. But I understand how you did it. I just don't agree with it. But I think that overall, I like the direction you're going, so. Councilmember Stossberg?
It really bothers me, two things really bother me. First, it really bothers me to take a percent out of 60 hours, because 40 hours is a full-time week. And I think that that delegitimizes the work that labor has done over the years to consider 40 hours a full-time week. Secondly, we on the committee, like in terms of using that 12-hour number, we use that 12-hour number as the very minimum possible number that any of us said. One of the other council members said 26 hours. So I think that if we're going to lowball, like taking it out of 60-hour weeks, I think that I would like to, at the very least, use the average hours, which was 16 and two-thirds, which was, I think, 42% of the position as the final goal. So I have, I have some problems with the rationale behind that. I think that it really goes against the framework.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback. Are there other, is there other feedback on the proposal that, or the general ideas brought forward by Councilmembers Daley and Zulik? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I really appreciate the amendment and the thought and effort that went into it. I think two observations. One is that, and I've grappled with this myself as well in thinking about phasing something, it's not a target that you're looking at three or four years as a dollar figure, because every year, grades change, we have a COLA of some kind. So even if we're notionally, let's say, thinking of 151,410, the recommendation for the mayor, as a three-year phase, I think we really need to be thinking of that as like the midpoint of grade 14, for instance, is like that's where we would land in three years, not whatever the dollar figure happens to be in next year's pay grades. So that's like, it's like, if we're talking about phasing, we need to keep in mind that there's like this slowly advancing target as well. And then I would say, yeah, similar, well, I just want to go back to the notion of sort of hours worked or something. I think my colleagues are right that, well, first of all, back to the work of the committee, a range of 12 to 26 hours with an average of 16.67 is what, among nine council members, we thought was necessary to meet the quality of community service that we all expect of the council. But that was not a, this was not 12 divided by 40 equals 30%, and that's the recommendation. Rather, like, if we were doing that, we would have taken the average and it was 42%. That's just like one factor in considering the broader, the broader consideration. So we did talk about the fact that the mayor probably works well over 40 hours a week, certainly in emergency settings, and that that weighed to like depress that 42% number down somewhat. 30% happens to align with a 12-hour, but that wasn't like the sole like mathematical throughput, at least not in my rationale or my thinking. And I think if not 30%, I'm much more comfortable with something like a 25% number. And I do think setting a percentage number is still a sound basis and thing to try to get to, because I think it is replicable, it is rooted in Bloomington specifics. I think if we just benchmarked like another city dollar figure for now, like what happens if they change and compensation a lot in the future? I think like taking a little bit more Bloomington-focused approach is good. So I like that percentage number. I would just suggest that maybe 20% or even below 20% is too low. And so I think I could get on board with something more like 25% while recognizing that folks definitely work much more than a quarter-time job on council. And the second thing I want, the final thing I want to say with that is that we do need to keep in mind that this isn't only the mayor we're talking about. We're talking about deputy mayor, grade 14s in IT, police, engineering, utilities, et cetera, that can actually, well, many of them will be making 151,000 next year. They don't all work 60 hours a week all the time, for sure. And many may go up even higher than that, to as high as 171,000 for a step five, which is 10 years of service. And one or two of them may be at that. I know we're capping at step three next year, but just noting that, I guess, the framework and its implication isn't, while we recommended setting a percentage of the mayor as a way to get at that number, dollar figure, the consideration of where the council is relative to other senior leadership positions isn't only about the mayor, it's also about department heads and others who are not 24/7, 365 on call, at least not in the same way the mayor is, and probably work much more normal hours, relatively speaking.
Other feedback on the ideas from Councilmembers Zulik and Daley? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you, too, for this and all of the words that you also wrote. I wanted to ask, like, did you all consider, I don't think I missed it, but did you consider also phasing in the mayor and clerk positions? Or did you, yeah, just like what?
What? Yes. Sorry. Yes. It is included in our amendment, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's in here? Oh, I wonder if it's in update?
A draft.
Okay, okay.
There's copies of that amendment somewhere for us to actually look at.
Well, yeah, we've sent.
It says that these are only draft amendments. We do not have final amendments yet in front of us.
We've been.
The drafts have been shared here and there just to get feedback, but we don't have final.
How do we read our potential proposed numbers out, if that would be preferable? It's the first third of each of them.
So the 142 is what you would look at for the third year? Is that right?
So that's for next year. It's the first third of our proposed. We kept in line with the framework in the sense that we are proposing that we eventually adopt those final numbers for the 2028 fiscal year, but we are proposing the first third gets implemented this year.
Okay, I'm sorry, so you? Can you just say that again, how you got to the 142? Is that what you were just saying?
Yes. So that is the current mayor's salary with the first third of the potential increase that would be fully implemented in 2028.
Okay, so the 142 would be the one, would be 2025, and that is a third of your final number?
That's correct.
Even though, okay, yeah. And then like how Councilmember Flaherty did just say, which I think is relevant, that we can't predict, I mean, I know that we can't, we can't also vote on year 2028, but it'd more be, we can't say like a dollar amount for that year because of COLAs and everything. It'd be like more like, right, like maybe you guys might do some edits and things before it's finalized, that like, it would be like percentages through the years.
Right. I mean, this is just our, you know, first proposed potential amendment, right? Like, we can't pass anything for 2028 right now, but I think we can, you know, state our intentions.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Other feedback on those ideas, or are there fresh ideas to put out there? Oh, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Follow-up. And I maybe just missed it. Well, I think I just haven't seen recent drafts or anything, which is totally okay. The rationale, can you all go through your rationale for the mayor and clerk? Because I think what I saw, there was rationale for council, but like how you got to your numbers for mayor and clerk? Like, yeah, how did you arrive at those?
At the phased-in numbers or the final numbers? Sorry.
I guess the final. Like how you, how did you pick those? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we kept.
Oh, okay, because I haven't seen those. Right, I see, because I haven't seen that. I get it. So you're at 151 and 129?
So actually, okay, so we did adjust with the clerk's salary. We did keep her in pay grade 13, but instead of the mid-range, started at the lower range. So that would be the 112 was the, no?
The same.
Okay. As I said, this is still a draft in progress.
Yeah, either way, no, I didn't know that, if you were using the grading, the salary, I just didn't know. I didn't. Okay, great, thanks. That does answer it, yeah.
It's confusing when there's nothing final in front of us, so. And I'm not a math person, so if I don't have it written out. Councilmember Stossberg?
But either way, your whole plan pegs at against a specific final number, which is the originally proposed numbers for this year. But as Councilmember Flaherty pointed out, the midpoint of grade 14 in three years is going to be an entirely different number. So I guess, I guess the math doesn't math well for me, and that's another piece of concern I have about that. And I also, at this point, want to call out, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Ruff, who hasn't said anything yet, and to ask him if he has anything that he wants to add right now.
Councilmember Ruff, do you have anything to add?
Well, there's a lot to take in. It's not as simple as the knee-jerk reaction that a lot of people in the community probably likely had when they, when they saw the numbers. There's a lot of thought and a lot of work, and careful consideration has gone into this. And like I say, just taking it all in.
Thank you. Are there other ideas for alternate proposals?
We're also workshopping possibilities for the phased approach, which is similar in many respects, and I can, I can discuss. So I think, almost as a starting point, I think trying to settle on what is the percentage of the mayor that we, that we think is, you know, I guess the right balance? And I, I guess my view is that 20% really is just far too low relative to the mayor for the city council, you know, which, which, you know, yeah, I don't need to go into the details of why that's the case. I guess 30% is what the committee thought of relative to the mayor and other senior leadership positions, as a full-time, part-time, you know, sort of thing. And 25% is a number that I can get on board with. And I'm also comfortable phasing to get there. And so, you know, if we thought about, I think we're at like 15 and 1/2 or 16% this, right now, and maybe moving to something like 20% next year, and then 22 and 1/2%, and then 25%, like over a three-year period or something like that. And then also to further temper the sort of magnitude of the increase, phasing in clerk and mayor as well, keeping the mayor where she's at this year for next year, and then, which is step, well, it's actually higher than step one for grade 14, because she's already above that level. But then moving to step two for grade 14 next year, and then, sorry, two years from now, and then step three for grade 14 in the third year of phasing in, which would be the midpoint of grade 14, which is the 151 figure, or whatever it's replaced by at that time. And then at that point, the council would move to 25% in the sequence that I outlined as well. I think the clerk, similarly, we can talk about phasing it, maybe like a step one, two, or three thing. I've heard feedback about what grade that should be or what levels people are comfortable with, and I think that's also an open point of discussion. Though my view is and always has been that the clerk is a department head, and we do, we do add responsibilities to the clerk's office as well, for instance, like newly overseeing boards and commissions in a much more comprehensive and exhaustive way than we've had in city government before. But I think ultimately, this whole exercise, because of its complexity and difficulty, is about finding viable compromise. So I think on all the positions, like that's an important frame through which we're trying to arrive at a, you know, an ordinance. That's it. Happy to answer questions about that, like conceptually, which again, shares some similarities certainly with the phasing. I think one key difference certainly is the percentage of the mayor that the council will be set at as the endpoint of 25%.
Are there any questions or comments about that proposal? Councilmember Stossberg?
I'll just say, I prefer that phasing plan because it sounds a little bit more in line with the original intent.
Do you mean that it follows the guiding principles more closely? Is that what you meant, or?
Yeah, that it just seems a little bit more, I guess, I don't know, I'm not quite sure how to say this. The math maths a lot better for me. I guess that's all I can say right now, is the math maths a lot, a lot better for me on that description. And maybe if I had the other one in print, that would math better, but because, I think that this one recognizes the, the character of that, of the changing nature of whatever the midpoint of grade 14 is, better than the first one did. Because the midpoint of grade 14 is going to change every year, and so to like factor in a third, and a third, and a third, like doesn't really, doesn't really work, because the target ends up moving, and so then you never actually get the target to where it should be. Whereas in this case, you do. Like, there's a phase of the base salary, i.e. the mayor's salary, and also a phase of the percentage of the mayor's salary, kind of all at the same time.
Councilmember Flaherty, would you, can you clarify, or is this clarified in your proposal yet about the clerk salary phasing that in? So would you also start that at step one of grade 13, and then two, and then midpoint, or?
Ideas we're scoping, I was looking at steps one, two, and three of level 12 as a possible adjustment as opposed to 13. I think personally, I support 13, and I support the step three, but the exercise of the amendment was actually trying to, you know, I support the recommendations of the committee, I guess, is my broader point, or something very close to it. And so the amendment wasn't so much about what I individually think, but about trying to arrive at what was a compromise point, perhaps. And I think that's a point of discussion, and maybe a little more open-ended in my mind, or less strongly rooted than, than what I feel like the percentage of the mayor ultimately needs to be on the council side. I don't know if that was helpful. In the current draft, I had it framed as level pay grade 12, steps one, two, and three as a proposal, but I think that could be pay grade 13, steps one, two, and three. You know, these are drafts conceptually, and just to be very clear, Councilmember Daley's and Zulik's proposal could easily be tweaked or amended to be, you know, percentages on their way to a midpoint as opposed to dollar figures like they were initially conceptualizing. So I don't think that's, you know, the principles, I guess, underlying it, and kind of the percentage figures that unwind where we arrive is the important piece.
So I think that's an important distinction, whether the clerk is at grade 12 or at grade 13. I mean, I think that the clerk is a department head and therefore should be at 13, like the other heads of departments that are smaller in size. be at 13, like the other heads of departments that are smaller in size. So that would be a fundamental shift for me to change the clerk's grade to a 12. I'd love to hear from colleagues what they think about where the clerk's salary should, should fall compared to department heads and other leaders in the city. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Okay, yes, I, as you know, I'm working with Councilmember Flaherty in the draft of this proposal here. And we did talk about a grade 12 based on feedback, you know, we've had with our colleagues. I do think what we arrived at in the frame, in the framework and our recommendations of a grade 13 makes the most sense to me, because I, I do think the responsibilities of the clerk, similar to the responsibilities of department heads, along actually with our council attorney and administrator, are department heads. And so I think we have this ability to correct or put our clerk in alignment with department heads. And I guess I really, I know we're talking about electives, but I see it too, that like then we would have one person, one basically department head that's not on level with department heads. And so I do think our recommendation from the beginning is, is what I prefer, based on duties, responsibilities. And I mean, I know we've had feedback from some members of public that our clerk doesn't have the responsibilities of other clerks. But first of all, I don't know that that's true. And then, second of all, I just keep going back to, we meet more than any other second-class city. And so the amount of meetings we have to attend, our clerk has to attend as well. And there are the minutes, and right there, just everything, there is the legislation that right has to get prepared and recorded and everything. And so, to me, the responsibility of that full-time job is a lot.
Thoughts on clerk's salary? Councilmember Stossberg?
I guess I'll go. So I've been thinking a lot about this to some degree, especially in the context of how we changed grades this year to go on a 14-point scale instead of a 12-point scale. And that kind of spread out those higher-level responsibilities. And so, one thing that I'm looking at right now, and I'm not sure how fully accessed it was, but as part of our committee work, we, we asked the, the HR department for, you know, that list of considerations that they had, that was on one of those slides, that was things like external work relationships, and independent judgment, consequence of errors, environmental strain, like all of those pieces that they kind of like put into a rubric and kind of spit out, you know, a grade. And then at the end of that document, they had loose definitions of the grades, right? Loose definitions. And it has 13s and 14s as department heads, and then 11s and 12s as division heads. And so, in the context of one of our committee meetings, I said, somebody tell me the difference between a division and a department. And what I was told was that divisions have to do with public works, like they're essentially like sub-departments under public works. And that made me start thinking about the, I mean, is, I think that we use this word department, and how is department really defined? And I don't have an answer necessarily on how department is defined, but is the, is the office of the clerk, like the whole office, is it more like a department, or is it more like a division? And so, should it be a grade 13, or should it be a division head, which would be a grade 11 or 12? And I also have an, an alternate proposal, and I ended up putting the clerk at the midpoint of grade 11, which is actually higher than the entry point of grade 12. So sometimes in moments like that, it's like, you know, where, where, because all of those grades overlap, it's, I mean, it's labels, it's what label do you want to put on it? But so that, I guess that's my opinion on the clerk, is I've been exploring that concept of is it a department or is it a division? And how are we defining department and division, and what are the actual differences? And, and how does that, you know, relate to the actual, like, duties of the clerk, and the complexity of what makes a department a department as opposed to a division? And, yeah, I don't have a great answer on that. The other thing that I do want to bring up is the, is the concept that we, as electives, can never lower the salary of electives. And so like me being generally more conservative, like that's why those like bigger numbers really make me nervous to jump right to them, because we can never lower them. And so I would honestly rather start, start lower, or more conservatively, even if it's, like whether it's a phasing plan, or whether it's a different basis, which is kind of what I'm going to talk about a little bit. But I, I am nervous about, about making any jumps that are, that are too large, because we can never go back.
Thank you. We've been here for two hours, so I want to go ahead and go to public comment, and then we can have more discussion amongst us here. But I know some members of the public maybe have been waiting. I don't know how many are online. We don't have very many here in chambers. But if there's anybody who would like to give public comment on the ordinance 2024-26, which is setting salaries for elected officials for 2025, you can come to the podium here and state your name and sign in, and you'll have up to three minutes. If you are joining us via Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, which will be under the reactions button at the bottom of your screen. So is there anybody in council chambers who would like to comment? Come on up to the podium.
My name is Jeff Richardson. Thank you for a very informative meeting. I learned a lot tonight. Let me just make a few observations. One is my perception of this council is that you're mostly really solid working people. I don't know the backgrounds, that some of you may have huge trust funds and huge amounts of money that I don't know about. But when you talk about you want more diversity, you want to have more access to this council that other people won't have. To me, my perception is that this looks like a pretty representative group of people, and working people in, in the city of Bloomington. So I'm pleased with you folks being on the council and the representation that you have. That's my perception. I may be missing whole segments of people that, you know, you folks are talking about, but that's my perception. I also, not to pick on one particular point, but one council member said that there's probably been a knee, knee-jerk reaction to this. And sometimes I think part of the job of any elective body, or a mayor, or clerk, or others, is to manage those perceptions. And so it's, it's an old adage, you know, you've heard, I think, before, when you have to explain a punchline of a joke, it's not a joke. You know, here, let me tell you, I can't believe you can't understand this. Then you go on for on and on and try to explain it. So in this context, this is not a joke what you're doing. It's very serious, but it's complicated. And so the perception is, is that this, back to your point, Courtney, is that this is self-serving. I mean, this is a perception that's out there. And maybe people don't get it, and maybe they're overreacting, but that is the perception. And somehow, you have to manage that perception, either by explaining why it's not, why you can't delay this vote for the next term, or why it's a hair-on-fire decision, and it must be done now, or else we're going to be in a crisis. Or there's something in between that, which I think Sidney and Courtney is what you're trying to do. But these are real perceptions out there, and it's not just whether people get it or don't get it. Also, there may be unintended consequences. This, we've seen this play out already at the county level, where people say they're working, you know, 85% of the time. And it sounds like, wow, they're really working hard. And what's happening is, is that's actually going to prevent a number of people from participating in government. Because the employers, let's say, let's just say IU, will say, you can't have two full-time jobs. And so it actually has the reverse intention, if you will, of trying to get more people in, you're actually getting people out. Because in, if these numbers now, if they hold at 26 hours, it could go up to 30, 35 hours, the employers, some employers will say, these are two full-time jobs. So it could have an unintended consequence, which is playing out actually at the county level. And then finally... Boy, two and a half hours, and I know, but I think it's really interesting to be so strict on this timeline, when we've sat here for two and a half hours, two and a half hours, we've listened. Okay. This is, this is another observation, why people feel, we're talking about access.
This is our rule, Mr. Richardson.
They don't feel that we're, that we have access.
Can I, how do we handle, can we make a motion? Can I make a motion to, given that we only have two people here, I don't know how many people we have online for, to extend the time for our individual speakers? I don't know the proper procedure. I probably should. I move, what's that? Okay. I would make move that we give each speaker the five, five minutes? Did we have three right then that went by quickly? I would move that we give the speakers five minutes tonight.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we allow five minutes of public comment per speaker. We can just do this by voice vote, I think.
Clarification?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
We only had a few folks in chambers. It sounds like there's five more online. We might have another 30-some minutes of comments, and maybe it doubles, you know, as people get interested or whatever. It is 9:35. I guess I want to, do we set a, a end time for public comment, just in the, I'm sympathetic to the motion. I just don't want to be caught unexpectedly where you feel like, this happens from time to time, where it just kind of keeps going and going, which is good, but also has limits to, I don't know.
An ending at, a cold, hard ending at 10:15, no matter what?
Point of clarification, does that motion count as a suspension of rules? Because if it counts as a, like if, because I think that we are, we're then suspending the rules of public comment, and creating a different rule for public comment, and a suspension of rules needs a two-thirds majority, and it's not debatable.
That's what I was asking.
It's also not amendable, so that might mean that you need to withdraw your motion to make a second one, if you want to amend it, to have a cold stop sign. If it's a suspension of rules, so I'm interested in the council attorney's interpretation.
Special meeting, are there limitations for special meetings on the length of public comment? Just a question. But is, is that a meeting practice for, for council? I know it is for regular meetings. I'm asking the question if that exists for special meetings. Then, to be safe, I, I would vote to suspend those, that rule with respect to public comment.
So Councilmember Ruff, in order to add the ultimate limit, did you want to take back your motion and make a new one?
Do, do we first need to suspend the?
No.
Okay. Yes, I would like to retract my original motion and simply add that public comment tonight will stop at 10:15 regardless of, of who's spoken or not spoken.
You need to do your whole motion from the beginning.
Oh, the speakers are allowed five minutes maximum, with comment ending hard at 10:15.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Sure that. Okay. Councilmember Flaherty? Zulik? Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes with more than two-thirds vote. So, Mr. Richardson, you'll have an additional two minutes.
Thank you very much. Just one other observation. I've had the privilege of being an executive, running a couple of state agencies, running a not-for-profit, running international program within a corporate foundation. And I don't remember ever working just 40 hours. I mean, I think it's fine to put that out there, but anyone who's running anything, including this mayor, the previous mayor, when I was on the council back in the 70s, then Mayor McCloskey, no one that I know of, in my professional lifetime, in an executive position, works 40 hours, or has worked 40 hours. I can't speak for every executive out there, but at least in my experience, in my own personal experience, but working with others, that job, you're on 24/7 call. And there may be some jobs that are exceptions to that. But I just want to, if you're using that as the basis, that this current mayor, any mayor in this town is working 40 hours, I think that's not valid. Having said that, I know there are several council members that are doing much more work, as Hopi, as you said, than the standard, let's say, 16 hours, depending on the situation.
By their title?
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Stossberg. So that just took up another couple seconds of my time. So thank you so much for doing the hard work that you're doing. I respect the council. I respect the institution, and I respect the mayor's office and the clerk. And so the more transparent, and the more open, and the more careful you are about this process, I think process is key, I think the better for everyone involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody with a hand raised on Zoom?
Received two comments that the members of the public would like to have read aloud.
Okay. And the comments that you received, there were names attached to those?
I'm sorry?
Were there names attached to the comments that you received?
There was to one.
Okay. Would you like to go ahead and read the comment that had a name to it?
Sam Dove, let me pull up the timer. From Sam Dove, Kerr and Jordan Canada, the firefighter union president, said they didn't feel supported by the previous administration. While that administration did invest in new trucks and equipment, Canada said it failed to address low salaries. Canada and Kerr said current mayor Carrie Thompson has better met their needs. From day one, they've, Thompson administration, done exactly what they said they were going to do, which had that negotiation in good faith and get our salaries up, Kerr said.
That's not relevant to this ordinance, so I'm afraid I'll have to cut you off there. Is there a hand raised that we can call on, on Zoom, please?
There is. I'm unmuting.
Hi, councilmembers. This is Renee Miller. First, can you hear me?
Yes.
First, before I go into my comment about this, I'd like to say Cheryl Munson, may her memory be a blessing to all who truly knew her. My spouse and I shared many meals with her, and we were neighbors before moving into the city, where we now see and hear that you city councilors think your salaries are more important to even say a word about her passing. So thank goodness we have a clerk who has both class and a heart, and I'm ashamed to know any of you at this point for not having mentioned her. Now, I'm going to go ahead with my comment. I fully support the full salary increase of the clerk. However, any more than that of which Fishers makes is too much for councilmembers. In fact, I think any increase this year is too much. I do not believe it is a knee-jerk reaction to have an opinion when people suggest an over 100% salary increase. Just because a committee works hard on a presentation to give themselves raises, doesn't mean that you deserve it. I can't get behind any of it. I think it, it was a sneaky thing to do, and the public wasn't really engaged or involved, and I'm just against it. do, and the public wasn't really engaged or involved, and I'm just against it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. We'll come back to council chambers. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak? Please come on up.
I'm happy. They have not one single person that has said anything about Cheryl Munson. They don't care about her. They don't care about anybody but themselves.
Excuse me, Ms. Miller, you're still, you're still unmuted?
Well, I suppose you need to mute me then. I don't have control over that.
I can't find it. What's up there?
They don't care about anybody but themselves.
I'm sorry, I disagree with that statement.
Okay. Mr. Boland?
My name is Steve Boland. I, I do care about Renee Miller, and I also care about Cheryl Munson. May she rest in peace. I want to acknowledge the presence of former council member Richardson. Anchoring bias was the watchword of my tenure on council for 20 years. We always just settled for the cost of living increase. But before even council member Richardson was on council, Charlotte Zitlow wrote in her latest book that a typical council meeting before the 1971 city election lasted five minutes. Members would file in, they would, as she wrote, put their coats on the mayor's couch because there was no council office. They'd listen to ordinances read by title only, not even with a synopsis. They would vote on them without public comment or debate, and they'd file out. Those weren't people who, these are people who likely didn't care how much they were paid either. I ask you not to succumb to reactionary politics. Those who've objected on social media or are people who, are people I think who don't like Bloomington politics in general. If you're satisfied with the extensive homework that the sponsors of this ordinance have done, and the justifications they've made for this complicated and non-trivial proposal, then vote for it. Because the state decided that only this body can make the determination. Critics can take their grievances about self-dealing up with the General Assembly, and good luck to them. Ask yourselves what it would take to study the city budget at the transactional level, at the register level. How much time do you think that it should take to know each department's budget that well? That should factor into how you determine the number of hours you work. That and the nature of the hours you work, which can be highly irregular, unpredictable, very stressful, and where your job decisions affect the public well-being. It's not that council is a part-time position. Statute doesn't explicitly say anything about how long, how a job should be. It's not explicitly full-time in statute. That allows people who are council members to have other work without expecting them to have other work. The minimum council salary should be re-pegged to the equivalent of full-time at the city's living wage. Council is already considered full-time for the purpose of health insurance. The conceit can continue to this end as well. That way, someone could imagine having this as their full-time job, even though they could still retain the option of supplementing their income with another job. That, or what's the city's living wage ordinance worth? That figure this year will be $32,500, and that should be the floor for any council salary. But let me be one to say, yes, you should be raising your own salaries, or you could do something like what I did in 2020. Redistricting the city council map used to be an exercise in self-interest until council approved the redistricting commission. Write an ordinance to farm out the job of the committee from now on to a citizen commission, and then implement the recommendations. That would insulate you to some extent from this criticism. Until you do that, despite the fact that you'll be the direct beneficiaries of the decision, you have an obligation to make a decision that is also in the best interest of the city, not just now, but long-term. The framework the city, the committee created is the real innovation here. You have to ask the question, have other cities gone through this process that our city's committee did? If Fisher's attitude is the same as it was here in the time of our predecessors, who thought it was just a privilege to serve and that we shouldn't receive pay at all for being council members, then their decision is not comparable to the deliberations this body has done. When all the other cities in the state that we compare ourselves to are suffering from the same anchoring bias, then what good is that comparison in the face of the new paradigm the committee has carefully constructed? Whether you agree with the results or not, the proposals for the mayor and clerk and council, I think, were very reasonably set and very reasonably approached. I urge you to, to follow the recommendations of the committee and do the best job you can to, to correctly peg pay to each other in appropriate proportion. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody else on Zoom?
I'm unmuting Eric Spoonmore.
Good evening, council. My name is Eric Spoonmore. I am president and CEO of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I want to take a moment to express my condolences to the family of Cheryl Munson, county council member, longtime public servant and leader in the community. It's a huge loss, and I feel for their family. And so I also want to take a moment here to thank all of the volunteer boards and commissions that serve the city of Bloomington, our Board of Zoning Appeals, our Plan Commission, our Redevelopment Commission, so many others that sacrificed so much of their time on a volunteer basis for no pay, for no health insurance, for no IRF or retirement contributions. And I appreciate Ms. Rosenbarger's comments earlier about equity and how important that is when we think about compensation for those who serve the city of Bloomington and make our government work. And so perhaps we can look at some of those roles and some of those sacrifices that volunteers are making and help them out before you all help yourselves out. You know, I represent, and my organization that I work for represents over 850 local businesses, about 80% of which are small businesses with under 15 full-time employees, struggle every day to make ends meet. They could only dream to be able to pay their part-time employees full health insurance plans, pension benefits, the kinds of fringe benefits and salary that you all make as part-time employees. And so, you know, I am very proud that our taxpayers, our businesses, our workers are able to fund the types of compensation that our city council members and our other local elected representatives, part-time representatives are able to be compensated with. And so just wanted to put all of that into perspective. I appreciate the work of the committee. I especially appreciate Ms. Zulik's and Ms. Daley's work to come up with a better alternative. And, and also thank you to Mr. Rallo for his remarks tonight. I thought that was very prudent and responsible as well, too. So look forward to file on this and continue the good work on behalf of the businesses, our workers, and the residents of Bloomington. Thank you all.
Thank you. We have another hand on Zoom?
Valerie Miriam. Will I still unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I want to add my respect for Cheryl and send my condolences to the family. I've known Cheryl for 49 years, have worked with her on any number of projects in this county. Truly a very fine, fine individual. She shall be missed. But back to what we are here for tonight, and I want to remind you of something I was reminded of many times when I sat on the school board. Perception is reality. And right now, perception for many people in this community is that you are tone deaf to them with the amount of the increases you have suggested for council. Our property taxes are going up. Our cost of living is going to go up, especially if tariffs are imposed. There are so many unknowns, so that at this time, to see such a large proposal increase really hits. Now, I want you to think about one thing. Did you run, were you elected to do a job, or were you elected to be a public servant? Because I think they are two very different things. I considered myself a public servant when I was on the school board. I considered myself a public servant the eight years I was on the library board. I have been on many boards, and the only one I was ever paid for was school board. And when I left in 2010, we made $2,000 a year. So I think how you perceive yourself is very important. I know of no other boards and commissions that have health insurance, that kind of support. So I think you need to think more about the public in these recommendations, and go slowly. Go slowly right now. I think other people would run for office if they had, quite frankly, a better impression of council. I wish we had Republicans on council. I think having one party is horrible, because we talk in circles. So look at the people who are contacting you. I know I contacted Courtney, and I really appreciated her very quick response. But you are the talk of the book clubs and of the neighbors, walking up and down the street. I'm just saying what they're saying. They're saying, who do they think they are? You have to be better in your presentation of why and how you want to achieve this change in salary. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have anybody else on Zoom?
We do still have a written comment that is not yet read.
Okay. And that has a name attached to it?
It does not.
It does not?
No.
Did you?
It's from Bloomington resident.
I'm sorry?
It's from Bloomington resident.
All right. Well, we do ask for people's names. Did you inquire what the name is?
We can ask, but my understanding is that we cannot compel people to give us their names in order to repeat their comments. Sorry, I said, we can ask for people's names, but my understanding is that this person wishes to be anonymous, and we can't compel people to give us their names.
Okay. That, that actually came up in the Committee on Council Processes today. So yes, at the current time, we do not have that rule. So go ahead and read the comment, please. Ms. Williamson?
We do have public comment rules that include things like being on topic and civility in public discourse and refraining from certain kinds of language. So I guess my question before you read it is, does it fulfill the public comment rules in terms of civility and language and that kind of thing?
It does.
Great. Thanks.
From Bloomington resident, how does the council justify having an annual salary higher than many of the full-time salaries of employees?
Can you speak a little more loudly or direct, more directly into the mic?
Yes. How does the council justify having an annual salary higher than many of the full-time salaries of employees of the city who work 40-plus hours a week? It sounds there needs to be more time and study on what the salary should be. Why not put the salaries on the next ballot next year and have the citizens vote on the elected officials? This way, the residents of Bloomington will know why their taxes will be raised.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. We will come back to council members for further discussion or questions or deliberation on this matter. Councilmember Stossberg?
I have an alternate proposal that hasn't been discussed yet. So is this a good time for me to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I actually have slides that go with it because it's sort of a mathy, because I'm a mathy person, and so I wanted a visual of that. So if Ms. Williamson could, could put that up, I would really appreciate it. So I've mentioned a couple, well, first of all, I want to, I want to say that I support the framework that we did, and my proposal here departs a little bit from the framework in that it uses a different basis for salary setting this year, and that basis is looking at, at wage gap. And I've talked about this already during some of the budget hearings about that idea that the across-the-board cost of living adjustments or COLA for all workers is just not equitable because it increases the wage gap. It, and, and so this is why I wanted the chart here. If you have Person A with year one salary of $20,000, Person B with $100,000, it's an $80,000 salary difference. You give everybody a 5% COLA increase, and then the next year, it's an $84,000 salary difference. And you can just like imagine that kind of exacerbated out 20, or 30, or 40 years, and what we have here is the salary gap between mayor and council. So in the year 2000, that salary gap was $59,500, and now that salary gap is $116,000. So it's, it's that, that gap has grown significantly. And it's not like, so there's a few like mathy assumptions that I make here when I'm thinking about salary gap. And one of them is that the salary gap is going to increase because of inflation and kind of like the value of a dollar. So what I decided to do then, and people can totally like question my methodology around this, and it might be a really interesting math debate, but what I did was I went, okay, in the year 2000, that gap was $59,500. What is the value in 2024 of $59,500? Like the buying power of that money. So the buying power of that money, I used an inflation calculator online, is $108,445, which means that the gap in theory this year, if we had maintained the same salary gap as in the year 2000, then the council-adjusted salary for the year 2024 really should have already been $29,586. And I, I kind of started, you know, as I said, I had been looking at this idea of COLA increases and equity during the budget cycle, and I wasn't quite sure how that could play out or should play out across the entire municipal city budget. And I was just kind of like noodling it a little bit. And county actually changed how they did some of their salary increases recently, taking into account this idea, and gave those with lower salaries some flat dollar amount increases to like counterbalance the salary gap issue as kind of their method of managing that. And looking at just the three salaries of mayor, council, clerk, I kind of, I noodled with this concept. And I, I noodled with the concept and did the math, not quite knowing what the math would, would come out with in terms of like independent analysis. And this is what, what the math came out with, is the salary gap has really, really increased, I feel like, between mayor and council in a way that is, I think it's relevant, and I think that this does change the basis of salary setting to some degree. And it does have this kind of like flawed assumption, though, that in 2000, we had an ideal wage gap, right? Which I don't think is necessarily a safe assumption, and I'll get to that a little bit more later, but it does carry that assumption with it. So, as I said, it kind of changes the basis of salary setting, and it introduces wage gap as a relevant piece of objective data, which is guiding principle number four. And so then I would propose an amendment, and I have a couple of different, you know, theoretical ones, kind of maintaining the wage gap, setting the mayor at whatever we end up setting the mayor, and then calculating the wage gap of $111,698 for 2024, or 2025, taking the 2024 ideal wage gap and adding the 3% COLA that the city was using for other employees this year. So against the guiding principles, it certainly improves. So against the guiding principles, it certainly improves accessibility, right? It keeps the mayor's salary reasonable because we literally can pick the mayor's salary, whatever. It meets equity only if the wage gap in the year 2000 assumed those positions as equal in nature, which is not necessarily a safe assumption. But I think that there's clearly more equity between those positions in the year 2000 than there is now. And depending on what you set the mayor, it certainly does have equity between civil city leadership and the mayor. Quality community service, kind of same thing as accessibility. With increased salaries comes increased likelihood that our elected leaders would serve the community effectively. It is an informed decision, I think, though it does prioritize a certain piece of information. And I think that it is transparent because it's all very mathy. But I'm not sure that it's repeatable because you really only see these differences over a long period of time. And we can estimate the cost of living increase at 3% next year, but it's really kind of an estimate, right? And so it's probably going to actually be a little different than 3%. And so it really, like, it's a, I think it might be appropriate in this case because it's good for a long-term check-in. And then next year, as our framework suggested, we need to start this earlier and we need to assess. And so then next year, I think we can kind of start from scratch on going, how do we want to do this long-term? And then, let me see if I'm, it's the what about the clerk? And so the reason I've left the clerk position out of this is that I think it's already been well-spoken up here tonight and I think it was well-spoken last year around salary stuff, that while I speculated that there may have been bias between mayor and council back in the year 2000, we know there was bias between clerk and mayor because of the nature of the gender bias between those positions. And so I do not think due to historic inequalities that this method could possibly be used to set the clerk salary. And so the sample numbers that I threw up there are just kind of two options, one of which keeps the mayor at the midpoint of grade 14 as originally proposed by the committee, taking that salary gap of, or the wage gap of $111,000. And that leaves the council at 39. The option that I actually like better is putting the mayor at that 141, which is the midpoint, wait a minute. Oh, I copied and pasted something that I shouldn't have. That puts the mayor at the step two of grade 14. I'm sorry, my slide is messed up there. So the 141, 535 is step two of grade 14 for the mayor. And so that is like, it's also very close to the cost of living, the COLA increase that the mayor would have had this year if we just take the current salary and add the 3%. And so then the $111,000 and change puts the council at 29. And then my thought, as I mentioned on clerk earlier, was that grade 11 as a small division head might be a compromise on that concept. And then I just threw up the midpoint of grade 11, but I'm also really, like, I'm not attached to that. And so I think that there could be, since none of these amendments are formal amendments, I think that there could be some interesting kind of combining of concepts for some of these salaries, depending on what the decisions are. So that was what I was noodling with this week.
Thank you. That's an interesting and different way of looking at the salary question. So I see that if we do the math for the year 2000s, council members were only making 15% of what the mayor was making. So I don't think that's enough based on the importance of the role of council members and the time spent by council members. So, but I understand that that was, you had to start somewhere and that was kind of an assumed, if not wholly supported, starting point.
Yeah, I just want to say, right now, council is also getting paid 15% of the mayor because that's the, you know, like, 15% is just lower. But just for reference, that first option, the option A that had the mayor at the midpoint, council would have 26% of the mayoral salary. And in option B, it's 21% of the mayoral salary if we start the mayor at step two of grade 14.
What are thoughts about this latest way of thinking of things? What do council members think? Councilmember Rallo?
I was considering the same thing this afternoon because COLA adjustments are going to, you know, essentially render larger increases, of course, depending upon your base salary. So, but my question was, Councilmember Stossberg, you had, your last slide had the mayor at, what was it? $141, something? Was that what you were proposing to set the mayor's salary? Because the COLA increase this year will take her from 138, whatever, to 142.
I was, we can probably say I was staying as true as I felt like I could stay to the framework in saying that the original framework was pegging, because like, our original framework said, we're going to set the mayor's salary and then we're going to set the council salary as like a percentage of the mayor's salary. And you could kind of reframe the word percentage and say, or even eliminate the word percentage and say, well, the council salary is dependent upon the mayor's salary. And so in this model, the council salary is still dependent on the mayor's salary. So then what you do is you set the mayor's salary first. So I had two proposals of setting the mayor's salary. One at the original framework notion, which is the midpoint. And then the second one at step two. And I chose step two because the mayor already makes more than step one and you can't reduce the mayor's salary. And so I set it as step two because that's what made sense to me. I would, I mean, I think that in terms of my own thoughts on this, I think that it's a good first step in general to correct the wage gap. And so wherever we set the mayor's salary, like correcting the wage gap is like the point of this as like a conceptual basis. Because I mean, this is changing the basis of the salary setting in terms of the framework.
Okay. I appreciate this. It's another way of really examining it. And it has some merit. So I appreciate it and I'll consider it. Thanks.
Other responses? Councilmember Flaherty?
I agree that it's really interesting analysis and like another input to demonstrate some things and how they've changed over time. I think I don't find it compelling as a basis, though, because of some of the same anchoring and arbitrariness to picking the wage gap in the year 2000, for instance. Like, I think it, for me, it departs too much from a values-based framework that we were aiming for. But I actually do think it's a relevant piece of information to inform what's happened to salaries over time, you know, in particular, the council relative to the mayor in this case. So I appreciate the work that's gone into it and the exercise, although I don't think I support the approach.
I will just say that I think putting the clerk at a midpoint of grade 11 is too low. I mean, as I stated earlier, I think the clerk is a department head. There are some varying opinions on this body as to that assertion. So, you know, I would consider a compromise, maybe going to midpoint of grade 12, but not going down to grade 11. I think that's too low, given the responsibilities of the city clerk. Other feedback or ideas, responses? We're beginning to run out of steam. I'd like to throw out something that may or may not be a concern for council members, but maybe should be, we should be transparent about. And that is that Mayor Thompson has said that she will not approve any salary increases beyond a cost of living increase for elected officials. So none of these proposals that we've talked about here would meet with her approval. I mean, I talked with her yesterday and, you know, she indicated maybe a small increase above the cost of living increase. But I think any of the proposals that have been put forward tonight in our discussion are things that she is likely to veto. So I just wanted to put that out there because if the mayor does veto, we are facing a deadline of the end of this calendar year in order to set salaries. And we would have to have another council meeting in order to act upon the veto, which we currently do not have scheduled. And I've been looking at possibly December 30th for such a meeting. I will reach out to you all about availability. Obviously, that is not something any of us were planning to do or would enjoy very much doing during the holidays. But I wanted to state that clearly as a real possibility. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Stossberg?
I'll just put myself out there in a probably politically vulnerable way and say that I just showed, based on the wage gap, that the mayoral position has been the winner in terms of increases. And that was referenced earlier by Councilmember Flaherty or Councilmember Rallo as well when he was citing the graphs that the B-square had. I can't remember which article that is, but undoubtedly, Mr. Askins will link it when he's doing this story because it's his own article that has that chart with the mayoral salary increases taking a sharp upward turn. Because when you start adding 6%, 5% onto that big number, you get an even bigger number. And so I think that it's really pretty abhorrent, the idea that the mayor is willing to veto any possible thing that potentially increases equity in pay amongst elected officials.
Councilmember Rallo?
Concluding soon, so I think I'll just express my appreciation to everybody for a really interesting discussion. I heard a couple of references to perception and the importance of perception as representatives of our constituents, elected officials, public servants. I think that I have great trepidation about increasing our salaries substantially. I think I've described what that means. I would say it's entirely defensible, I think, to compare us to some cities, well, to compare us to the, say, the top 15 in the AIM survey and target for us, you know, in the range of the mid 20s, so a modest increase. Again, just for reference, I look at, I mean, it was a difficult, well, the conclusion of the review of the clerk salary last time was putting the clerk in the top tier, which is the case currently. It seems to be the top, the third highest in the state. So I have trepidation about raising that because I don't, and if you have compelling evidence for why the clerk as an elected official is equivalent to a department head in terms of responsibilities and duties, then I think those need to be essentially laid out in terms of, you know, the various programs that are done and the types of responsibilities and so forth. And I think the mayor is, as Councilmember Stossberg said, has approached the point where I think a simple COLA increase is adequate. So that's where I'm finding myself right now. And I might be collaborating with some of you in terms of an amendment or I might fashion an amendment tomorrow for discussion. So, thank you.
Any other final thoughts? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Quasi-final. Was wondering if it might be useful, because we talked about the numbers in our draft amendment, to also just pull up our chart for a minute to look at those? Would that be helpful?
Is that something that staff has available that could be displayed?
It might be useful just to, yeah, conceptualize it better than I was able to in words and then also talk about iterations on this, including different years of phasing, different, you know, step increases, different grades. But I think it gets at, it shares a lot of similarities, in fact, with what councilmembers Zulik and Daley put together. The endpoint for the percent of mayor's salary for council is different. And I think the clerks, but conceptually it's the same. And I think this concept of figuring out your endpoint if we're going to phase things and then doing, you know, that will move in tandem with a moving pay grade ranges is worthwhile. Councilmember Rosenbarger, if you had other things to say about that or folks had questions? Sorry, I wasn't close enough. I won't keep talking, though. I invited you perspective.
Okay, yes, I, because, I mean, looking at, just talking about everyone's potential proposals slash amendments tonight, I do think the two with steps are very similar. So I thought it could just be useful to pull it up because I think if councilmembers Daley and Zulik switch just to percentages, which might be necessary, they're going to be pretty similar with just a little difference in council and clerk's start, I would say. So, yeah, I think we're going to have potentially a lot of work to do tomorrow. And some things I like about this proposal, because I think it is important that we do elected official salaries all together. I do like seeing steps for each elected official type moving up as we go through the years. And I mean, I know this isn't the only proposal with that, but it's just some things that I'm considering. I think too, just to reiterate, a couple of things. If folks are looking at council at $27,000 as potentially being too high, but no one has really talked about council numbers. Like, I mean, to me, it is the 20% of the mayor's salary. I think just reiterating that in this part-time position, the average amount worked is 43% of a full-time job. And I know there's been a lot of talk that a lot of folks at the city staff work more than 40 hours, but I do also think there's actually a good work-life balance and I think the city strives for that. There is comp pay. And a lot of folks have pretty hard boundaries at the city that they work their 40 hours. And I mean, I don't necessarily think we need to get into that, but there are different compensation structures for working basically overtime for our city employees. So there's that. I think I had just one more note, I'm sorry. If we are looking at other cities, I just think we have to keep in mind that a city like Fishers Meets once per month. I can't even imagine what that would do to my day-to-day if we met once per month. It's just so incredibly different, I would say. This is also neither here nor there, but I personally spent 14 hours on that PowerPoint. I'm just saying, like, I think because a lot of folks out in the ether are, well, I've seen a little about like, what council doesn't even work, you know? What do they even do? And not everyone, of course, people here aren't saying that. But I think there is like the perception of a human to like, almost like doubt that someone else does work a little bit. Like, that job can't be that hard, you know? Or just... just like, no, there's no way they work 16 hours, like, I don't see it, you know, things like that. And I guess I just want to like question that belief a little bit. And I will also say for me personally, on this council, I try to say yes to every salary increase that is put before us, because this is one of the hardest cities to live in, in Indiana, in terms of cost of living. And part of the way to fix that is increasing wages every single way that we can. There was talk that average median income should be used as a basis here. That, to me, looks like if some people are not paid much, nobody should be paid well. If someone is not paid well, nobody should pay well, be paid well. But I'm more of a Michelle Obama-type, right, that is like, we need to go high, and we need to instead look at raising people up to living wages here as often as we can, I guess. That was a mix of this table and kind of my overall, my general comments.
Comments before we wrap up for the evening? I would just ask my colleagues to try to work together, of course, subquorum, and just via email, and not simultaneous. But I think it would be great if there could be communication between now and tomorrow afternoon, so that we don't have, you know, five very similar proposals, and we're just arguing about $100 here and there tomorrow night, but rather have maybe two substantively different proposals for amendments that we can discuss. Councilmember Stossberg?
To that end, I did the math while the chart was up there, so thank you for bringing the chart up there, that that does address the wage gap issue that I was concerned about at probably all three of those levels, but certainly the 2025 level, where absolute certain numbers are known at this time.
Councilmember Ruff, please, take some bandwidth.
As I said earlier, there's a lot to think about, a lot been presented. And tonight, we saw former Councilmember Volin's idea about tagging it in some way to the city's living wage. Councilmember Stossberg's pay equity presentation just a minute ago, or analysis, the intense, deep work that the original committee did. Councilmember Rallo's more comparative-based, I mean, there's a lot here. And we may see some different amendments tomorrow than have some modifications and maybe something new, I don't know, between now and tomorrow. So I'll probably just reserve most of my comments to, until tomorrow, and just finally say, you know, one of the commenters, the public commenters, you could hear in the background saying, oh, they just care about themselves, is self-serving. I don't want to be insulting, but frankly, that's absurd. That's ridiculous. The spirit of every proposal that's been made, including what came out of the original committee, is pretty clearly based on creating an environment where anybody can run and doesn't have to have too big of an opportunity cost in their own life to be able to serve. And it is still serving, it is still serving the community to do it and be paid for it, right? Just because you're not in a position to make a huge sacrifice and opportunity cost in your life for other things you could do to earn some additional income or with your time and your commitment to the community, just because you want, your need to be compensated in some way for it, doesn't make it greedy or self-serving. It's still service, it's still community service. So I'll save most of what I got to say probably until tomorrow, though. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to check in with our staff and see if there's maybe a deadline, an hour tomorrow by when they would need to have the final wording of amendments, because it also needs to go out to the public in a packet and leave adequate time for people to read that packet. So is there a suggestion? Attorney Laner?
Yes, and I think we need to reserve time within the office to review the incoming amendments, to make sure, as you mentioned, that there isn't any duplication and to address any issues. Of course, the earlier, the better. We have been working with some council members this week to answer questions and review drafts. So my hope would be that by early afternoon, we could have, we will have received final versions of all of the amendments. 1:00, I would request, no later than that, and of course, the earlier, the better we can start processing things at that point. And then there's time to contact individual sponsors with any questions. There may be presentations that sponsors desire to make tomorrow night. So there'll be a significant amount of meeting preparation in addition to the amendments as well.
By 1:00 PM, the final language should be at the council office.
You know, my impression is on most of the amendments, I think, unless there are changes after tonight, largely, the amendments are nearly finalized. So, anybody who had any questions about that, or any response to what I've suggested?
Briefly, I 100% agree with the goals outlined and the intent. I think from, I want to be clear, I guess, from a legal perspective, our code requires amendments to be committed in writing and displayed prior to adoption. We have even in some instances needed to make a tweak or make a small amendment to something within the course of a meeting, and occasionally have recessed briefly to do so, or had staff been able to do that and pull it up. And so I'm not suggesting that we should bank on that or take that approach as a default. I guess I just want to clarify that if an amendment that's submitted already, or, you know, early tomorrow morning, ends up being very close but needs some tweaking, that would be more than just a, an amendment to the amendment on the fly, like, that is legally and technically possible. Again, not endorsing that approach, just clarifying that what the steps that have to be gone through from a technical matter to be able to adopt it.
No, I would agree. Certainly, that's possible, and I think that's been done here in the past. Trying to leave enough time that we can upload everything. You know, some staff people leave at 4:00 in the afternoon, for example. So I'm trying to create some cushion there.
Councilmember Rallo?
Two considerations. One is, I suspect that we're going to have a number of competing amendments, and they're, they may be of three parts. They may include the mayor's salary, the clerk, and the council members, or we may divide them. And so we should consider that as well, whether we want to divide them and do them each individually, et cetera. I don't know, I'm just putting that out there. The other, I think, consideration, Madam President, is to consider placing this on the last on our, on our list of items tomorrow night. Isn't this currently number three out of four? And we have, is the ATC enabling after this? We may want to move, so staff doesn't have to, you know...
We are facing a December 31st deadline with this salary legislation. We do not have that constraint with the ATC legislation, and I was worried about running into the 10:30 rule, or possibly the midnight hour, when any two council members can end the meeting. So I wanted to be sure that this item was definitely going to be heard.
I get it, okay.
If we need to postpone the ATC, I believe we could still do that, take it up later.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
With apologies to Ryan Robling.
Yes. You know, from listening tonight, it appears that there could be four or five amendments presented on this one ordinance. I mean, another option would be if you would prefer additional time during the day to flesh this out, and if in the end, there are only two potential amendments presented in the afternoon, you know, then of course, there would be less staff time involved. And, you know, we wouldn't need to receive all of those amendments by 1:00. I think we could push the deadline out. I also have to recognize that there will be amendments coming in on other ordinances tomorrow night as well. So we won't be dealing simply with these four or five amendments, there will be others as well.
Good faith to try to make it as painless as possible. And I do want to recognize that many of my colleagues here have full-time jobs, and so it will be a stretch for them to spend time tomorrow morning on this. And my appreciation to you in advance. I think that will conclude our discussion for this evening. Thank you to everybody, and we will see you tomorrow. We will have a second reading and a vote on this matter at our regular session tomorrow, which begins at 6:30 PM. So we adjourned.